We are now recording.
Thank you. Still waiting on that one trustee. Thank you for your patience.
Um Chair, are you looking for trustee Buenaventura?
Uh Ray would be good. Anybody really? I was thinking Hy-Lin is, I don't see Hy-Lin here.
Uh trustee Buenaventura and trustee Chen are actually not going to be able to attend, so.
Okay, oh, that's right. Trustee Chen, we know that I forgot, forgot, I apologize for that. All right, given that, I will just call us to order, seeing that we have a quorum. Good morning and welcome to the Board of Trustees' meeting of the State Bar. This is our annual, excuse me, our regular March meeting. Today is Thursday, March 16th. Appreciate you all being here in this remote fashion. Could we please have the roll call, Madam Secretary?
Ratin?
Present.
Buenaventura, not present. Chen, not present. Sisneros?
Here.
Duran?
Present.
Good?
Present.
Noel? I see trustee Noel, I believe you're on mute, trustee Noel, but I see you are present.
Yes, I am present. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelby?
Present.
Soell?
Present.
Stallings?
Present.
Tony?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. As a reminder to the trustees and to everyone who's joined us, this meeting is being recorded. Next on our agenda is a call for public comment. Staff bar will attempt to call members of the public in the order that they appear in our attendee pool. Everyone is participating by Zoom and hope you all remember that you've got a function to raise your hand to indicate your desire to address the board that is at the middle of the bottom of your screen, just to the right of the share screen button. If you click on that icon, you'll let the click secretary know that you want to speak. If you're participating by phone, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the star nine key, also alerting staff to your desire to speak. We are going to limit public comment for, to three minutes per speaker. In the interest of moving the agenda along, we do have a lot of stuff on our agenda today. And you will see the onscreen timer and you may get a reminder from staff when you have a limited amount of time left. We have several people who have signed up in advance to speak today. Thank you for doing that and I will recognize if they are on the line, the caller with the last four digits of their phone number, two nine nine two. Once you have your microphone activated, you'll have three minutes. Thank you for joining us this morning.
Uh, the first speaker who had signed up with that phone number is not in attendance, Chair Duran.
Okay, we'll move on to Jean Chau, please.
Uh, Jean Chau is also not in attendance.
Okay, let's do keep our eyes out to see if those folks pop into the attendee pool and we'll put them in the queue. Uh, our third requested speaker is Mark Garagos.
Um, also not in attendance.
Okay, how about Benjamin Cohn?
Yes, we do have Benjamin Cohn and we'll allow him to speak now.
Great. Good morning, Mr. Cohn. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. I wanted to first speak about the new public comment policy and a hole that some of the subentities, I think, are falling into. The agenda item attachments are often very important to understanding the substance of what is going to be deliberated on and what public comment may be submitted for. The agenda item attachments are also often not posted until sometime well after the agenda itself is, even if the agenda itself is posted at the, right at the deadline for Bagley Keen. And this creates problems, I think, for the informing the substance of public comment because the agenda attachments are sometimes available only one or two days or maybe just a few days before the meeting. It's making it hard to answer questions that other interested members of coalitions might have about an agenda item when everything about how to respond is in that attachment that's not yet posted. This is a big issue right now for the March 24 Committee of Bar Examiners Meeting and the new Test and Accommodation Rules Revision Proposal that is supposed to be amended. I have a lot of people asking me what the response should be and I don't even know what the proposal is amended to now. So if you could please get that posted as soon as possible, that would be great and ideally before this weekend. The second public comment that I wanted to make was in regard to the ongoing budgetary difficulties. Uh, I wanted to express that there are a lot of holes in the grant funding. It seems as though the State Bar is under utilizing government grants from the state of California and from federal agencies. It uh could conceivably qualify for a number of grants that are appearing on public databases. And then a lot of other government agencies seem to have a larger percent of their budget, when I was doing some research, funded by grants than the State Bar currently does, which indicates that uh, that may be one of the sources of strain. And that's really concerning when everything is so understaffed that uh.
Mr. Cohn, I apologize. I apologize. I'm gonna have to stop you there. Uh, thank you for raising both of those issues. I certainly recognize that they are important, not only to you, but to many, many members of the public and indeed to the trustees, I would imagine. We may have some responses for you later and I appreciate your bringing those issues up. Next, uh, do we have a caller with the last four digits, four, three, eight, three?
Uh, we do not, but uh, Jean Chau has now joined.
Okay, if you will promote Ms. Chau. Good morning, Ms. Chau. You've got three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, good morning. Thank you so much. I spoke briefly earlier and thought that that was the only opportunity. So um, I do have a couple of points that I wanted to raise. One of them is I am working on a case for a client and he is a plaintiff in three lawsuits affiliated with an action against the Board of Trustees and it's, his law firm is a party to that action. And so we raised a conflict of interest under Rule 2201, two, two, zero, one of the rules of procedure. And in, you know, what's been happening where the plaintiff is in three lawsuits, has filed this 2020 actions against the Board of Trustees um, in April 26, 2022, uh, which we raised and that's, it's almost been, I guess, it's almost been a year. And we requested outside counsel be assigned to the pending investigation. The Assistant Chief Trial Counsel evaluated the two, two, zero, one request and responded that it's not going to be sent to outside counsel. Uh, so we were concerned for that issue because other concerns were raised regarding screening and there was a conflict of interest in relation to one of the staff members at the State Bar. But the response that we received there is that um, Mr., well, the ACTC, Mr. Garcia represented that in his opinion, there was no conflict of interest that requires the State Bar to recuse itself from cases involving this attorney's law firm. And he also denied that there was an appearance of impropriety requiring refusal. However, the plain language of Rule two, two, zero, one states that the chief trial counsel shall recuse the OCTC when there's a conflict of interest or may recuse itself when, or to avoid the appearance of any impropriety. So I got a follow-up response from Mr. Garcia and he said that based on his evaluation, there's no appearance of impropriety. But the purposes of the rule is to provide for mandatory refusal. And the appearance that the office may not exercise or would have a difficulty exercising their discretionary functions in an even-handed manner is a serious concern. Fair treatment um, is required in order to protect the public. And the board, in its own words in 2019, put into the context of People v. Vasquez, 2006, 39, Cal 4th, 47, makes it applicable. So we seek for transparency and consistency. In another matter, and Jeremy Sorenson is back on, he's number two, nine, nine, two. I have a client who had filed a State Bar complaint and it is being closed, even though there's egregious conduct that exists. As a former prosecutor of 13 years, I have handled thousands of complaints and processed them to decide prosecute or not. And this one is definitely prosecute. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Chau, for raising those issues. As I'm sure you understand, the Board of Trustees is not in a position to comment on any active uh, investigation or disciplinary matters. However, we will note your comments and respond where we can, probably offline. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Chau indicated that two, two, nine, two is on the line, so if we would promote that person, thank you.
Good morning. I spoke earlier, but I guess it's a separate meeting. My name is Jeremy Sorenson. I retired from the United States Air Force after 21 years of service, primarily as a combat fighter pilot. I'm a plaintiff in a putative class action representing thousands of US military service members in the Sorenson v. Delta Airlines case pending in the Northern District of Georgia. The Sorenson v. Delta Airlines case alleges Delta violated 38 US Code, Chapter 43, a statute whose sole purpose is to protect military service members. On February 16th, 2022, I filed California State Bar complaints against my former attorneys, Jean J. Stonebarger, Charles M. Billy, and to a lesser degree, Brian J. Lawler. My complaints against these attorneys were drafted with the assistance of my ethics attorney, Jean Chau, who is a former State Bar prosecutor herself with 13 years of experience in the Office of Chief Trial Counsel. The State Bar complaints identify in detail dozens of violations of the California Rules of Professional Conduct and contain hundreds of pages of factual support. Additionally, even more factual support is contained in the public record. My complaint identifies amongst other items, my former counsel published in the public record documents they identified as confidential attorney-client privileged communications. My former counsel disparaged me in public filings. My former counsel misrepresented the law and facts to myself and my co-plaintiffs to manipulate us into continued representation by them. My former counsel made filings on my behalf, including on dispositive motions against my wishes and when they no longer represented me. My former counsel made numerous material misrepresentations to a federal court judge in public filings under penalty of perjury. My former counsel intentionally attempted to prevent me from being represented by my counsel of choosing. My former counsel refused to provide my case file following termination and has not provided it to date, directly harming my case. My former counsel denied my chosen counsel access to case documents and experts designated on my behalf. My former counsel refuses to withdraw representation of me, condemning they cannot be terminated. These are but a few examples of attorney misconduct that demonstrate multiple breaches of fiduciary duties owed by these attorneys to me and the putative class. The team the State Bar assigned to investigate the misconduct has failed to diligently investigate, evaluate, analyze, and pursue these complaints, which have been pending for over a year. I request that these complex complaints of attorney misconduct be reassigned outside of Trial Team Eight and that experienced and competent staff be assigned. The ongoing misconduct by these attorneys continues to irreparably harm the litigation I am a plaintiff in, as well as the general public, specifically thousands of US military service members. The State Bar has published multiple statements regarding misconduct at the State Bar in the Girardi case. The failures of the State Bar are not limited to the Girardi case and continue today, clearly demonstrated by the mishandling of my complaints. This is unacceptable and must change. Public trust requires action, not merely words. The attorneys are Jean J. Stonebarger, bar number two, zero, nine, four, six, one, complaint two, two, oh, zero, two, one, three, three. Charles M. Billy, number two, four, seven, zero, four, six, complaint two, one, three, two. Brian J. Lawler, bar number two, two, one, four, eight, eight, complaint zero, two, one, three, one, and the case is Delta V.
Thank you, Mr. Sorenson.
Airlines 117 CV.
I uh, I appreciate you taking the time to address this and again, recognize that you've raised important issues along with Ms. Chau. Thank you for your service in our country's military. I appreciate that truly. And uh, you know, other than referring to what I just responded to Ms. Chau, I can't say much more. Thank you. Uh, we made a call for four, three, eight, three.
I do not see um, a person with that phone number online.
Next on the, next on the list is Lori Taylor.
Uh, Lori Taylor is present, however, does not have her hand raised, so um, would you like?
If you'd still like to plead, uh, to speak, please indicate by still raising your hand while you're deciding if we will move on to Mary McNamara, please.
Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for having me, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm speaking this morning in support of proposed Rule of Professional Conduct 8.3, Part C. I'm here in my capacity as a former president of the Bar Association of San Francisco and as a current member of the Bar Association's Legal Alliance for Reproductive Rights. Uh, proposed 8.3, of course, proposes to require mandatory reporting of lawyers who are engaged in criminal acts under certain circumstances. And the new proposed Part C of that rule would exempt from the reporting requirement uh, any criminal act that would be a criminal act in another state, US territory, or foreign jurisdiction, but not a crime in California. And the reason this is so important to the members of the Bar Association and particularly our reproductive rights group is that ban states, as we call them, states where abortion is now criminalized or proposed to be criminalized uh, will affect lawyer discipline in those states. Lawyers will be held to account in those states and disciplined for advice or counsel in relation to reproductive rights. And under reciprocal discipline, that discipline will end up hurting California barred lawyers who also hold a license in this state. And that is more than a theoretical risk. Uh, I submitted in the Bar Association letter, a link to a letter from the Texas Freedom Caucus that threatens bar discipline. In addition, I think without this exemption, there will be a chilling effect on California lawyers who will fear harassing complaints filed against them by people who oppose reproductive rights. The Bar Association of San Francisco strongly urges adoption of this particular language and I thank you for your attention this morning.
Thank you, Ms. McNamara, for your time and efforts. Next on the list is Carolyn Shining.
Uh, we do not have Caroline Shining present, however, Lori Taylor would like to speak now.
Okay, Ms. Taylor, welcome.
Um, thank you very much. I spoke at the very beginning of the meeting in support of Mary McNamara's comments about uh, Rule 8.3 subsection C, but I'll repeat for those board members who were not present, um, my presentation. Uh, I'm Lori Taylor. I'm the Women Lawyers Association of Los Angeles Advisor for the Overarching Reproductive Law Project, which is a joint effort with Southwestern Law School's Women's Law Association. Uh, when the Supreme Court in Dobbs overturned 50 years of precedent and permitted state legislators to ban or severely restrict abortion, the ruling that there was no right to privacy in the Constitution also jeopardized access to contraception. Lawyers organized, uh, and Orlup is one of those organizations to help pregnant individuals in states that ban or restrict abortion get the health care they need in California. But because states with abortion bans are working to criminalize any activity that aids and abets abortion, as Mary noted, no matter where that abortion is performed, some states also seek to criminalize the provision of care for transgender people. So many lawyers who wanted to work in this important area worried that if charged with a violation of those restrictive state laws, they would face State Bar discipline in California. And this inspired the Southwestern law students to form the Overarching Reproductive Law Project with Women Lawyers Association to make sure that wouldn't happen. We wrote to the State Bar. We asked for an advisory opinion that reproductive rights lawyering would not result in discipline. Uh, we have not received a response to date. But we've entirely support proposed Rule Point, eight, point three's requirement. Well, excuse me. We also realized that proposed Rule Point, eight, point three's requirement that a lawyer must report another lawyer's criminal act might discourage lawyers from this essential activity. And we made written and oral public comments at the March COPRAC meeting and the committee addressed our concerns. Like Mary McNamara, we strongly support new paragraph C. For purposes of this rule, criminal act as used in paragraph A excludes conduct that would be a criminal act in another state, United States territory, or foreign jurisdiction, but is not a crime in California. Lawyers have a duty to secure justice and it was very inspiring that law students felt required, motivated to step up and form an organization to help that occur. Our dedication to that duty should not be dampened by a fear of discipline. Um, and we will continue to hope that the State Bar will clarify that it will not discipline California lawyers who work to guarantee access to reproductive health care. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, for taking the time at both the audit committee and this full meeting of the Board of Trustees. I will check to see whether Mr. Garagos has joined us.
Uh, we do not see Mr. Garagos.
I think he indicated he was not going to make public comment. Is that correct?
He, um, he signed back up again.
Oh.
He's always welcome. Uh, and so we'll wait to see whether he attends the meeting or if he's attending, whether he wishes to speak during public comment. Okay, that is all of the folks who signed up ahead of time. Madam Secretary, are there other people who would like to address the board?
Yes, we have one hand raised, Todd Hill.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Hill. Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Rand. Thank you very much. Though I'm very, very sure I signed up in advance for public comment, but it matters not. Um, for those of you who don't know me, good morning. My name is Todd Hill. Uh, my case number is a little difficult because it's been filed in Central District Court. But for reference, it is two, colon, three, dash, CV, dash, one, two, nine, eight, dash, JLS. Uh, one more time for those in the audience, uh, is filed in Central District Court. Case number two, colon, three, dash, CV, dash, one, two, nine, eight, dash, JLS. It is, in essence, a suit for a variety of business practices and fraud allegations for which I believe all of you are named, with the exception of Ms. Good, in attendance. Uh, it relates primarily to activity that was conducted at my school. Uh, fraudulent activity in which they awarded fewer units than the law allowed under the supervision and approval and support. As it appears, uh, now two years later and over 102 days after State Bar subsumed uh, the duties and obligations of my school, uh, when it put it on probation, uh, December 2nd, 2022 of last year. Uh, State Bar has failed to protect me or other students in similar circumstance, unfortunately. But here, I want to say to Ms. Chau's earlier commentary, there does seem to be a pattern in practice where there definitely is this notion that uh, one can write two letters, usually on someone who is temporarily disjointed from the current administration. It seems a common practice to blame the last ED or, or, or some other person who was there at some prior time, ignoring the complaints that were received during your tenure. Uh, it seems very, very plain and easy to adopt rhetoric, to open up a new ad hoc committee, to say that there's a new audit, but you, of course, provide all the documentation for the audit. You provide all the records that are to be audited. And so you limit the world of the audit fundamentally. There seems to be a lack of the ability to follow procedures, uh, any procedure on the Administrative Procedures Act. And consequently, again, for those in the audience, I invite you to inquire on my case in Central District Court, filed February 20th, 2023. Number two, colon, three, dash, CV, dash, one, two, nine, eight, dash, JLS. I welcome you to, to look at it and observe it as.
Thank you, Ms. Good. Appreciate you taking the time. Okay, one last check with the secretary to see if there are any other members of the public who wish to address the board.
Do not have any other members of the public who'd like to address the board.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Move on. We'll, we'll, my goodness, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is approval of our minutes as set forth in the posted agenda. We've got February 27, open session, February 7, open session. And then our nine, January 19 and 20, regular meeting minutes. Understand that the secretary will be making an announcement with respect to some of those minutes. Um, before she does that, let me ask if there are any members of the board who wish to note any corrections or modifications to the minutes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just need to recuse myself from the February 27th minutes as I was not in attendance.
Okay, we'll, we'll note that for the minutes of this meeting. Madam Secretary, did you want to make an announcement with respect to those same minutes, I believe?
Yes, I'd just like to announce that the correction was made to the January 19, open session minutes. The correction that we made was to just clarify that the consent calendar was voted by the board in its entirety. The calendar was voted in its entirety.
Um, I also wanted to note, uh, Mr. Chair, that I need to recuse myself from those meetings where I was not in attendance.
Okay, so noted. May I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes with those additional recusals and notes?
Uh huh.
Motion by trustee Noel and a second by trustee Stallings. May I have the roll, please?
Ratin?
Yes.
Buenaventura, not present. Chen, not present. Sisnero?
Hi.
Good?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Shelby?
Hi.
Soell?
Hi.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Hi.
Duran?
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays. Minutes are adopted.
Thank you, everyone. It takes us to item 30 on our agenda, which is the Chair's report. I, I have a few things that I'd like to, uh, to go over. The first is to officially welcome new trustee Sarah Good. This is her first regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, though she has joined us at, I feel like it's been at least one, but maybe two other meetings. Sarah, welcome. Is there anything you'd like to, like to say by way of introduction?
Uh, no, thank you, um, Chair Duran, and I'm very pleased to be working with all of you and with the State Bar of California. So thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. We're very pleased to have you. Uh, not with us today, but also a new member of the Board of Trustees is Attorney Ray Buenaventura. Uh, we hope to see him at another regular meeting sometime soon and certainly are appreciative of the work we know he will put into the agency with his, uh, with his unique background. I'm going to move on to committee assignments because we have two new trustees, uh, Sarah and Ray. I would like to put them on the Finance Committee. I appreciate in advance the time and effort that they will devote to that important topic. Would also like to ask the board to approve my recommendation of the addition of Greg Noel to the Audit Committee. Madam Secretary, is there a resolution that the board needs to adopt in this respect?
Yes.
There's a resolution for your review, board members. Is there any, are there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Stallings, salute.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Ratin, second.
Motion by Stallings, a second by Ratin. Madam Secretary, the.
Ratin?
Yes.
Buenaventura, not present. Chen, not present. Sisneros?
Hi.
Good?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Shelby?
Hi.
Soell?
Hi.
Stallings?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Duran?
Hi.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to move on to liaison assignments, uh, as the trustees know, and for those of you who are new, uh, to our business. Um, we have several subject matter areas in which members of the Board of Trustees serve as liaisons at the Chair's request to various of the Bar's functions. Among those are access to justice and diversity and inclusion. Um, there's the liaison for that issue here to far has been trustee Tony. Trustee Tony, I thank you for your work on that, on those important issues. With the addition of Sarah and Ray, I'm going to. With the addition of Sarah and Ray, I'm going to ask both of you, Sarah and Mark, whether I can switch out Sarah for Mark. I see some thumbs up. So, thank you for that. And Sarah, I understand your background will lend itself very well to this important work, so thank you in advance for all of your efforts. We also have the ever-important admissions function of the State Bar. Trustee Stallings and I have been working with Executive Director Wilson and her staff on those issues. And so I'm going to just ask your continued service with me, Brandon, on those issues. And no need for board action on this. Just wanted the trustees to know and members of the public to know that if either of those issues, admissions or D E I, are important to you, you can feel free to contact any of the trustees who are liaisons. And we are here to listen and help. Thank you very much. Couple of other points to note. I feel like it's been a while since we've all been at a remote meeting, and indeed it has been, right? We have returned to in-person meetings of late, and I think that that has been very good, both for the trustees and our staff and also for the members of the public who finally have been able to come to join us at our State Bar offices. But here we are in a remote fashion again. And it's interesting because I think last week, or maybe it's this week, is the three-year anniversary of the worldwide, the global shutdown. And certainly, a lot has transpired in that time, not the least of which is the State Bar has adapted and learned how to continue to do its work in whatever fashion is necessary. Those of you who know me well, and if you listen to anything I said at my very first swearing in, I touched on the themes of strength, adaptability, and resilience. And I noted how in the work that I've seen the State Bar do in my brief time here, that I've really seen those those attributes at play and at work for the good of the agency and ultimately for the better service to the public by way of public protection and the important mission that we're charged with by the legislature. But, you know, we must continue to adapt and be resilient, and so this is one example. Our budgetary constraints have already been mentioned in at least one of the public comments. And I know it is on the mind of the leadership here at the State Bar, and essentially, we are facing some some challenging times in stretching the resources to meet the needs, and the needs are many. The public comment that was offered today touched on just a few of the issues that the trustees and our staff and the many volunteers that work for the bar and for the betterment of the public are addressing regularly on a daily basis. And they range from national issues to very, very specific California issues. And I think it behooves us all to remember that the more we can give each other some some grace and some understanding, the better we're going to be able to focus on the work. The trustees meeting remotely is, I know, not the favorite thing for some of us because we do get a lot out of being in the same room together and being able to work off of each other's energy. And it's a different sort of energy here on the screen. I feel like I'm talking a lot. But it's not just us who are doing this, right? It is the various committees of volunteers who do important work for the legal justice system in California, including folks like the Committee of Bar Examiners, the members of the Judicial Dominies Evaluation Committee. All of us are doing the best we can within the constraints that are put upon us, whether by a pandemic or by budgetary issues. So, just my own personal thanks for your continued efforts, your continued adaptability, and ultimately, leading to the resilience of this agency. Also, on my mind lately has been the release of the May and Lazar reports last Friday. I imagine it's been the same for the rest of the trustees. I have heard many, 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 many thoughts and comments and concerns and frustrations, and even some applause from colleagues, from strangers, from friends, lawyers and non-lawyers alike, recognizing that what the State Bar has done in releasing this information is not easy, but it is important by way of doing our best to remain open and transparent, to assure the members of this profession and ultimately the people that the profession serves, that we are not going to back down from a troubled past. And I said it to members of the press, I said it in written statements, and I'll say it here again personally. On behalf of the State Bar and the Board of Trustees, I apologize for the failures of the past. I recognize that there is a long road ahead to learn from and rectify those failures. But ultimately, I do believe sincerely and earnestly that everyone who is here on the screen and all of our employees do want to overcome those failures. We do want to make the system better, and we appreciate the patience and understanding of those people for whom we work. We appreciate the patience, understanding of our stakeholders in the legislature and in the courts, that we will continue to go where the information leads us. And collectively, hopefully, we can come to better solutions, better systems to protect the public, which is our most fundamental charge. Thank you all for your understanding. Thank you for listening to me. I know it's a little bit of a speech, so I'll get off of the soapbox. There are many important items on our agenda today, one of which was spoken to by some members of the public. So, I will just note that the proposed mandatory reporting rule was a long time coming. I appreciate Coprac's efforts and time in looking at that very important issue and listening to public comment. Now it's here at the Board of Trustees for us to do the same, and I hope, and I'm looking forward to a fulsome and enlightening discussion on those issues as we move through our agenda. I will hand it over to Executive Director Wilson for her oral report. Thank you.
Great, thanks. And I'm going to pick up on some of your themes there, Ruben. I want to start off really, though, by thanking my staff, the team here at the State Bar. It's been an incredible last couple of weeks, last few months, certainly culminating in the release of the reports very visibly. As discussed earlier this morning at Audit Committee, the same time that the State Bar made this really unprecedented move towards transparency and choosing to release the reports, we're also undergoing several audits. And I think it's important for the board to understand that we have the state auditor here. We have a financial audit underway. We have an internal controls audit. So, these are all external audits happening at the same time, requiring a lot of many of our staff. We also, very recently, in the midst of all this, got a notice that the Supreme Court with like updated briefings on the LA Times litigation. So, I say this to say there is a tremendous amount going on here. And I think it's important for me to really lift up to the board the work that has been undertaken by staff at all levels in all parts of this organization have been touched by the demands of what has been happening. So, I want to give a thank you, and I want to recognize that. I also want to share with the board that one of the things that happened recently was an all-staff town hall. This was a voluntary event that we, a meeting that we pulled together following the release of the reports, and over 400 of our staff chose to participate. George, Alene, and I answered questions and really shared our thoughts and perspective on the reports, on the Girardi situation and what it says about us and where we want to go as an organization. And I wanted to let the board know that one of the key questions that our staff have is, you know, how can we make sure this doesn't happen again? And I think it's a question we hear externally, but it's a question we are asking ourselves internally as well. And we talked about the importance, of course, of policies, procedures, compliance, auditing, but that at the end of the day, this really comes down to culture. Culture set at the top, of course, but reinforced by every single member of our staff, having the tools and the wherewithal to hold us accountable. And to that end, at the end of today, I will be sending out to staff updated information about our new whistleblower policy. And really want to give my thanks and appreciation to O G C for moving quickly to establish what will be a new process for us where the State Department of Justice will be handling our whistleblower complaints. So, I think these are important discussions that we've been having internally. And I wanted to share that with the board. Again, my thank you to staff and to the team, recognition for all of the work that's taken place, and also appreciation for the power of culture, which is much more challenging than a policy or procedure, but ultimately, much more important. So, those are my remarks, and I look forward to our agenda today.
Thank you, Leah. And again, thank you to you and all of your staff for the important work that you are doing under very, very difficult circumstances. I recognize that. That takes us to item 50 on our agenda, which is the Consent Calendar. Let me start by asking whether there's any member of the Board of Trustees who wishes to pull an item from Consent for separate discussion, or perhaps even just a question. Trustee Tony, yes?
Yes, I would request that we pull item 50 dash four, the annual report on the Lawyer's Assistance Program, because it hasn't been reviewed by any board committee. And I had already let staff know ahead of time that I was going to be requesting a presentation. So, hopefully, they've had enough time to do that. I didn't want to spring it on people, you know, by surprise or something. So, that's my request.
Thank you, trustee Tony. I certainly, as the chair, appreciate that advance notice, and I'm sure that our staff does as well. Any other member of the Board of Trustees would like to pull another item or have a question on your new Consent Calendar? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the Consent Calendar minus item 50 dash four, which we will get a separate report on?
Stallings, salute.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stallings. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Sisneros. And we have the roll.
Bratton?
Yes.
Buena Ventura, not present. Chen, not present. Sisneros?
Hi.
Good?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. Motion carries.
Okay, wonderful. I believe we're going to have Deputy Chief of Programs, Bridget Grammy, join us for a presentation on the annual filing of the Lawyer's Assistance Program Oversight Committee Report. Bridget, welcome. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. Yeah, as Chair Duran mentioned, my name is Bridget Grammy. I am the Deputy Chief of Programs here at the State Bar and work with the team that administers the Lawyer Assistance Program. So, I just wanted to give a couple of, you know, brief highlights about the report, this annual report. It is a statutory requirement. And the statute really requires that we just provide some key statistics, which we've done. And it is in the item. I don't have a PowerPoint, but just a few of the highlights on the statistics. For new intakes, there were 172 new intakes last year, which was down from 192 in 2021, but still generally higher than years past. We had a kind of a significant increase during 2021, which we think was a result of the pandemic. So, we think that accounts for some of the decrease last year. We also highlighted that of the 165 cases that were closed, 42% of them were closed with participants meeting their stated goals. 7% were not admitted, and only one was terminated from the program in 2022. But in addition to the statistics, what I really wanted to highlight for you all that I think is important is an important change that happened in the administration of the program last year. And because of the new strategic plan and the focus, or one of the focuses on prevention and providing additional support to lawyers, we have transitioned the Support LAP program, as some of the members of the board might remember. We had what we call the voluntary section of the Lawyer Assistance Program, as well as a mandatory, where people were ordered to participate in the Lawyer Assistance Program by usually in the discipline process or possibly through the admissions process. We took the voluntary part of it, and we have transitioned it over to the Office of Professional Competence. And at this, we're doing that because over in the Office of Professional Competence, we're working in general on providing programming for attorneys, more education, prevention, and support. And so, we think that by doing this and incorporating them into the Office of Professional Competence, we're going to be able to provide some really important additional services to attorneys, including, you know, programming on cognitive decline, overall wellness, some law practice management tools, those types of things. This transition has all happened. It's highlighted in the report and summarized in the report, but it's really beginning to start in this year. So, I think we're going to start to see a little bit of a different. We're hoping to increase the usage of the program in general to be able to reach more people and just to expand the type of services that we're able to provide. And the last thing I just wanted to highlight that we talked about in this report is we have an Oversight Committee that works with the Lawyer Assistance Program. And this year, they've identified two really important policy areas for them to focus on. They're going to be looking at the cost of the program to participants, ways that we can increase the financial assistance to them. And then also, they're going to be looking at this definition of successful completion, looking at other states and other types of programs, trying to understand, you know, the best way to define what it means when somebody has successfully completed the program in a way that is supportive of the attorneys and also still protects the public. So, there will be more to come in this year. A lot of work being done with this program. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Grammy. Thank you, trustee Tony, for bringing this to the fore. I'll start with you to see whether you have any questions or comments. You're on mute, sir.
Hey, thank you very much, Bridget and Chair Duran. I don't have any further questions. I do appreciate it when we, as a board, get a chance to have presentations on reports that haven't been reviewed by another committee. So, thank you.
Duly noted. Just an observation that I have is that this report highlights not often talked about, but an important function of the State Bar. And for those people who are involved in the program by necessity or otherwise, the work that Ms. Grammy just described hopefully has a tangible, meaningful effect on their lives and their ability to practice law and to serve the public. So, again, the stuff in the headlines is one thing, but the work that's being done sometimes you know, behind the scenes or in a very quiet way, can and does help the public. So, thank you for that. If there are no other questions or comments, may I have a motion to approve the item as presented?
A move.
Second.
Motion by Tony, and I think it was Sisneros for the second?
Yes.
There's the resolution for the boards and the public's review very quickly. Can we have a roll call, please?
Bratton?
Yes.
Buena Ventura, not present. Chen, not present. Sisneros?
Hi.
Good?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. Motion carries.
Okay. Let us transition to the board sitting as the Regulation and Discipline Committee. This is series 60 in your agenda. And the first item up is, I think, probably one of the most anticipated in a while. Certainly, I'm looking forward to the presentation and discussion. This is the Proposed Rule of Professional Conduct 8.3 with respect to reporting professional misconduct. This is a request to circulate for public comment. Erica Doherty and Bridget Grammy, please. Leah, did you want to make any introduction? Are we going to? Leah, did you want to make any introduction? Are we going to just go straight to Ms. Doherty and Grammy?
No, we'll go straight to.
Wonderful. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm Erica Doherty. I am the Program Director in the Office of Professional Competence. And Luisa or Alfredo, do you have some slides to share, please? Great, thank you. Okay, so as we'll walk through, this item is going to seek Board approval to release for a forty-five day public comment period two alternatives of Proposed New Rule of Professional Conduct eight point three. As I talk through them, they'll be essentially described as Alternative One and Alternative Two. Alternative One being what COPRAC approved, and then Alternative Two being a staff recommendation. But before getting into that in more detail, first, I'm going to discuss a history of consideration of a version of Rule eight point three by the State Bar, including by the Board of Governors in two thousand ten and by the Second Rules Revision Commission in two thousand sixteen. I'll also refresh the Board on the events that led up to the proposal before you today and give a brief overview of the ABA Model Rule and then describe in detail those two alternatives that we request be issued for public comment. Finally, I'll discuss how those two alternatives compare to the ABA Model Rule and other jurisdictions' Rule eight point three. And then we'll just briefly discuss the next steps for the rule and the resolutions. Go ahead with the next slide. Okay, so in two thousand ten, the First Rules Revision Commission recommended adoption of a version of Proposed Rule eight point three. At the time, that was limited to the reporting of felonious criminal acts that would have raised a substantial question as to a lawyer's honesty, trustworthiness, or fitness. And just so you're aware, this is a narrower requirement than what's being proposed in either alternative later on in this presentation. Go to the next slide. That recommendation was provided to the Board of Governors, now Trustees. And the Board at the time did not recommend moving eight point three forward. That was based primarily on two concerns. That being the burden on lawyers to determine whether or not the misconduct would rise to the level of a felony. And then just a more general public policy or policy concern that it was not the right approach to have a mandatory duty to report within California. In two thousand sixteen, the Second Rules Revision Commission, which ultimately led to the adoption of the current rules of professional conduct that for the most part went into effect in November first of two thousand eighteen, did not recommend a version of Rule eight point three. In addition to some of the concerns that were addressed by the Board of Governors in two thousand ten, they also had four additional concerns. Those being the difficulty in determining what is a substantial question as to a lawyer's honesty, trustworthiness, or fitness. The potential conflict between a lawyer and their client in the lawyer's obligation to report. And then as well as with their duty of loyalty to a client surrounding that obligation to report. As well as inconsistency with the obligations that a judge has. So the Canon three D two of the California Code Judicial Ethics requires a judge to take appropriate corrective action where they're aware of attorney misconduct. But that does not require reporting to the State Bar. It's just an option for judges to take when they are taking such appropriate corrective action. Thank you. So where we are today, in November, at the Board of Trustees meeting, Chair Duran directed COPRAC to prepare a proposal for the new rule of professional conduct addressing the duty to report. COPRAC was directed to consider several things, the ABA Model Rule eight point three, variations of Rule eight point three that are in effect in other jurisdictions, as well as what we just discussed, the past consideration of a version of Rule eight point three by the State Bar, including the Board of Governors and past Rules Revision Commissions. After that was requested, in December, Senator Umberg introduced Senate Bill forty-two, which further reinforced the Board's request that a rule be considered. And in light of that, staff asked COPRAC to expedite, providing the proposal back to the Board of Trustees at this meeting, when it was originally requested that it be provided at the May Board of Trustees meeting. In that timeframe, since it was requested by Chair Duran in November and where we are today. So COPRAC did issue a proposed version of Rule eight point three for a thirty-day public comment period. There was also a public hearing held on February fifteenth. And during that timeframe, COPRAC received and reviewed eighty-seven public comments that informed what is being proposed to you today as Alternative One. So I did want to talk a little bit more about what ABA Model Rule eight point three looks like before going into the alternatives that are being recommended today. ABA Rule eight point three requires a lawyer report any violation of a rule of professional conduct that would raise a substantial question as to the lawyer's honesty, trustworthiness, or fitness as a lawyer. Similarly, there's an requirement that a lawyer report judicial misconduct. There are some exceptions within the ABA Model Rule, including that it does not require the disclosure of information protected by the duty of confidentiality, which is in California Rule one point six, as well as ABA Model Rule one point six, as well as information gained by a lawyer while participating in an approved lawyer assistance program, such as the State Bar's Lawyer Assistance Program. Just so you're aware, Senate Bill forty-two, as proposed, would require a licensee to report the same misconduct as ABA Model Rule eight point three if it was committed by a licensee and would create an exception for the duty to report information protected by the attorney-client privilege, as well as information gained by a licensee while participating in the State Bar's Lawyer Assistance Program. So they're relatively similar, what's currently proposed, Senate Bill forty-two and the ABA Model Rule. Go ahead to the next slide. Thank you. So talking through these alternatives. Alternative One is essentially what COPRAC approved at their meeting earlier this month and recommended that it be submitted to the Board of Trustees. What Alternative One is proposing is that a lawyer must, without undue delay, report another lawyer when they know credible evidence that the other lawyer has committed a criminal act, engaged in fraud, or misappropriated funds or property in violation of Rule one point one five. And there is a qualifier to the duty to report that any of these types of misconduct must raise a substantial question as to the lawyer's honesty, trustworthiness, or fitness as a lawyer in other respects. That's the same language that exists in the Model Rule. Alternative One, just so you're aware, is more narrow than the ABA Model Rule. So this requires reporting of very specific misconduct as opposed to required reporting of any violation of the rules. Go ahead to the next slide. Alternative Two is a staff recommendation. It's a little bit broader than what's proposed in Alternative One in regards to the misconduct that must be reported. It requires a lawyer to report without undue delay when the lawyer knows of credible evidence the other lawyer has done any of the things in Alternative One, essentially, so committed a criminal act, engaged in fraud or misappropriation, but also dishonesty, deceit, or reckless or intentional misrepresentation. There's a little bit more of a nuance to this in the sense that the criminal acts are limited to those that reflect adversely on a lawyer's honesty, trustworthiness, or fitness in regards to conduct involving dishonesty, fraud, deceit, or reckless or intentional misrepresentation or misappropriation. There's no qualifier to that. So any time a lawyer is aware of another lawyer engaging in that type of conduct, they would be required to report. In regards to the criminal act, it's only those criminal acts that would reflect adversely on essentially the lawyer being a lawyer. Go to the next slide. Thank you. So those are the two key differences between Alternative One and Alternative Two. The remainder of the rules, so outside of paragraph A of the proposals, is identical. Those things include paragraph A, which is the knowledge standard, creating a duty to report when the lawyer knows of credible evidence. Both alternatives require a lawyer to report without undue delay, which means that the lawyer must report as soon as the lawyer reasonably believes reporting would not cause material prejudice or damage to their client or the client of the lawyer's firm, and that's clarified within one of the comments to the proposed rule. Paragraph B of both alternatives makes it clear that a lawyer may report other violations of the rules of professional conduct for the State Bar Act, but they're not required to do so. Paragraph C, which you heard quite a bit of public comment on earlier this morning, describes how criminal acts do not include illegal conduct that would be illegal in another state or jurisdiction, but is not illegal in California. So that's attempting to address some of those issues where there may be a conflict in state law between a different jurisdiction in California and to address the fact that if it's not criminal in California, there would not be an obligation to report it by a lawyer. There are also similar exceptions or identical exceptions to the reporting requirements in both Alternatives One and Two, including that there is no duty to report information gained while participating in a substance use or mental health program. There's an exception for information protected by confidentiality, privilege, or other rules or laws. So for example, the duty of confidentiality in Rule one point six, the attorney-client privilege, as well as mediation confidentiality. And then there's other clarifying comments, as well as cross-references to other obligations within the rules, such as that it does not eliminate a lawyer's duty to self-report their own misconduct as exists in Rule eight point four point one and Business and Professions Code six oh six eight subdivision oh. That there are certain obligations surrounding a duty to report that a lawyer cannot threaten to report to obtain advantage in a civil dispute. And then cross-reference is to statutes that set forth protections for a lawyer who does report, as well as criminal penalties for a lawyer who files a false and malicious report. Those both exist by statute. Go ahead to the next slide. So again, just a reminder, because there's a lot here, I know. Alternatives One and Two are identical, except for paragraph A, which discusses the type of misconduct that must be reported. And Alternative One is narrower than what is proposed in Alternative Two. I can pause here for a moment to answer any questions you might have, or I can start discussing how these are different to the ABA Model Rule and other jurisdictions.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty, for the very, very concise and clear report. It looks like we do have a question from Trustee Noel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Doherty, I have a question about about the issue that was raised earlier by public comment. There was mention of a session C. And the section C, as reported by those who gave public comment, appear in both alternatives?
Yes, it does. So the exception to what constitutes criminal act as provided in paragraph C exists in Alternative One and Alternative Two. And just a reminder, it would exclude conduct that would be a criminal act in another state, US territory, or foreign jurisdiction, but is not a crime in California. So with the examples that were described in the public comment this morning, none of those things that I'm aware of are a crime in California, so there would not be a duty to report those things.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Trustee Noel. Any other trustees have questions at this point before Ms. Doherty continues? I don't see any. Okay. Let's move on.
Okay. So how Alternatives One and Two compare to the ABA Model Rule and most other jurisdictions? So the ABA Model Rule, as I discussed briefly earlier in the presentation, requires reporting of any violation of the rules of professional conduct with that qualifying language. So that raises a substantial question as to a lawyer's honesty, trustworthiness, or fitness as a lawyer in other respects. Alternative One, which was the COPRAC-recommended version, requires reporting of certain types of misconduct, so criminal acts, fraud, misappropriation of funds or property that would violate Rule one point one five. And all of these have a qualifier that's the same as the ABA Model Rule language. So the conduct would have to raise a substantial question as to essentially the lawyer's fitness. Alternative Two, which is the staff-recommended version, is a little bit broader. So it would require reporting of a criminal act that reflects adversely on the lawyer's essentially fitness, as well as conduct involving dishonesty, fraud, deceit, or reckless or intentional misrepresentation or misappropriation of funds or property. Again, those non-criminal acts do not have a qualifier to them in Alternative Two. So any known dishonesty, fraud, deceit, or reckless or intentional misrepresentation or misappropriation would have to be reported under the Alternative Two. And then just a couple other key points. So the knowledge standard in the ABA Model Rule and most other jurisdictions is that a lawyer knows of the misconduct. The knowledge standard set forth in both proposed Alternatives One and Two is slightly higher, and then it requires knowing of credible evidence. And then the exceptions to the duty to report. The ABA Model Rule and most jurisdictions do not require reporting of information that would be protected by attorney, the duty of confidentiality. Several jurisdictions expand that and also call out attorney-client privilege. And then they also exclude from the duty to report information obtained by a lawyer participating in a State Bar Lawyer Assistance Program or the equivalent of that. California-proposed Alternatives One and Two would not require reporting of confidential information, attorney-client privilege information, information protected by other rules or laws, such as mediation confidentiality, as well as other privileged information, as well as information obtained by a lawyer who is participating in any substance use or mental health program. So that includes programs that are not State Bar-provided programs beyond the Lawyer Assistance Program. So next steps as to how this could essentially play out. So what's being requested is that both alternatives are issued for a forty-five day public comment period today. If that does occur, in the meantime, staff will continue to work with Senator Umberg's staff regarding Senate Bill forty-two. Our intention is to bring back the public comment, as well as a version of a proposed rule to the Board at the May two thousand twenty-three meeting in about two months. And then if the Board decides to approve a version of Proposed Rule four point three at that meeting, it would be submitted to the California Supreme Court for adoption, because all rules of professional conduct must be approved by the California Supreme Court. At this point, I can answer other questions if you may have them, or we can put the proposed resolutions up on the screen for you.
Trustee, good.
One question I have from Ms. Doherty is why the staff felt compelled to create Alternative Number Two and what they thought was lacking in Alternative Number One that they wanted to address. I just wanted to understand the why and the backdrop to it.
Absolutely. So Alternative Two, like I described, is a little bit broader, and it's, you know, one of the Chair Duran's requests was for COPRAC to look at other jurisdictions' versions of the rule. So Alternative Two is substantially similar to the Illinois version of eight point three. And so that was the basis for what is required to be reported in that version of the rule. It's also what was recommended during the public comment process by the Office of Chief Trial Counsel as far as the types of misconduct that were recommended to be reported. The reason that COPRAC did not recommend reporting of those additional things is because they were concerned with the weaponization of those particular types of misconduct. So and a balance. So what they were looking to is to try and balance the need for, you know, reporting on things that really can result in client harm or public harm. And so that's why they raised, you know, fraud, misappropriation, and those criminal acts. In the COPRAC's discussions regarding those other things, so deceit, misrepresentation, and dishonesty, those are things that they felt could be handled in other contexts within litigation. So through judicial sanctions or other things where appropriate and would lead to more weaponization of the rule, essentially.
Okay. Trustee Tony, please.
Thank you. I appreciate it a great deal that this item is only for discussion today and that we're talking about putting it out for public comment and for us to take into account and make a decision at a later meeting. I am both. I have some concerns about this proposal. I want to be open-minded. But I thought it would be good for me to list out my concerns now so that the staff and those who support this proposal will know what it takes to get my support. So one, it is never, okay, I'll speak for myself. I am never moved by the argument that everybody else does it. That is not a policy argument. Okay? If someone wants to make that argument, then I want to see how has it improved public protection in those other states? Simply stating, everybody else does it, is not a policy argument. It moves me not. That's one. I'd rather it not be used as a policy argument if it's not going to be presented as a policy argument. My second point is, I really appreciate, by the way, the staff time, because it took a lot of staff time to summarize because it took a lot of staff time to summarize and place in those boxes and charts every public comment that was made to CO-CRAC. It made it a lot easier to read and review and, you know, get the gist of what was going on in a reasonable amount of time. So I appreciate that. And I'm just concerned that there were several complaints of, and sometimes from attorneys who have reported, other attorneys, to the state bar and feel, or at least from their standpoint, reported that the state bar simply did not respond positively, did not conduct thorough investigations, and closed the cases. So I'm a little bit like, well, this policy needs to say something about what the state bar is going to do, not just what attorneys should do. I think that's lacking in this proposal. The third point is, you know, we talk about report, and I'd like clarification, this is a process issue, on the difference between reporting and filing a complaint. I want clarity. Is this the required to file a complaint? Or is there another report form? What is the process? Is it going to go through the regular complaint system? Or is there a special unit or special procedures when attorneys are reporting on other attorneys? I want to know. That's important to me. Then the next item is, I want to know, what's the enforcement and consequences? I believe very strongly there is no point to adopting a requirement unless you also adopt consequences for failing to meet your obligation and that there's an enforcement mechanism. Otherwise, there's no point to it. It's window dressing. If we're going to do this, I want to be serious about it. And then finally, I would expect that we would be presented a detailed budget of how much this would cost. We can't adopt policies to do new programs, new requirements, that are going to increase the number, the amount of work that OCTC has to do when, and we'll get to it later in the agenda, where it is apparent that they do not have enough staffing and enough budget to handle the current caseload. So, it's, to me, I think, important public policy to have capacity, how many staff, what's the budget, what's the procedure, all that needs to be part of our decision-making process. I do not expect responses to these today, but I thought it would be fair for me to provide advance notice so that when we meet again or in between time, some of these issues can be addressed. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, trustee Tony, for the thoughtful questions and comments. Trustee Stallings, vice chair Stallings, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask that chief trial counsel Cardona perhaps address, I suspect, at least one of the questions trustee Tony asked. I noticed that he was promoted into the screen, and so I appreciate whoever had the foresight to do that. George, welcome. Good morning. I believe you've heard trustee Tony's questions. Interested to hear what you have to say.
I did. On some of them, obviously, I don't have the answers, as you correctly anticipated, since I had not heard the questions before. So, you know, obviously, those are questions we can talk about with Erica and come back with answers. You know, I'll address one of those, the concern about attorneys bringing complaints to us that end up getting closed without, as they allege, thorough investigations. Obviously, that's something that we're continuing to try and work on. I will note that in many instances, it is not uncommon for a complainant to disagree with us as to the view of the evidence after an investigation. And so, you know, I'm not sure that that would be something that would be necessary to address in the context of this rule. I think the other questions are questions, obviously, that we'll need to address. In terms of enforcement consequences, I believe the enforcement consequences would be that a violation of rule 8.3 would be a violation that could be subject to the normal discipline process. In other words, a failure to comply with reporting obligations under rule 8.3 would potentially be a violation that could be the subject of the normal disciplinary process with the range of remedies that we have. And the others, I believe, are going to need more thought to address, in particular, you know, a survey of how it, and to improve public protection in other states. I'm not prepared to address that right now. Potential reporting obligations, and whether that would be something different than a complaint, and any budget.
George, could I ask you to briefly address how the complaint review unit plays into the thing that you mentioned just before that last point? Essentially, you know, folks don't always agree that-
Yeah, so there's two mechanisms for review that are built into the system. Every closing letter that we send out to a complaining witness advises them of their ability to challenge our decision to close it by submitting a request for review to the complaint review unit, which is housed right now under OGC. And so it takes an independent look at the case and our closing reasons, and determines whether there's a basis for referring it back to us for reopening. If the complaint review unit agrees, then the complaining witness is also advised of their ability to challenge that in the Supreme Court, which has the ultimate say, by filing what's referred to as a Walker petition, seeking to have the Supreme Court order us to reopen it. So that's the review process if there is a disagreement as to OCTC's closure of a complaint.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Trustee Tony, any follow-up or further questions on that? If not, we will move on to-
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Brandon?
All right, thank you. And yeah, I just, I did want to echo some of Mr. Tony's questions and concerns, and I think mine. I think George sounds like he's going to be looking into some of those issues. I did have a question about if these other jurisdictions, if they maintain the same types of data that we maintain in order to determine if there's a significant increase in the number of complaints that they received once these rules were instituted. So I would just ask staff to perform that analysis if possible, just to give us an idea of how much, you know, how, just the resource costs to implement this, just to give us an idea of what we're looking at. So on to other issues. So I understand the staff normally works with the legislature to provide resources on different types of bills. And so I don't know if anyone is prepared to talk about the level of support that we give in Senator Umberg's office in his drafting of the rule. And then I'm interested in what happens if the legislature passes a rule that is at odds with a rule that this, or I guess, a policy decision that this board makes, what happens in that event?
I can respond to those. With respect to your question about the other states, we can do a little bit more of an analysis on it, but I do know, and Erica, correct me if I'm wrong, we do know just kind of anecdotally that in other states, it has not resulted in an increase in, you know, like the floodgates being opened of complaints in other states. The public comments that we're hearing is that California is uniquely litigious compared to other states, so that that might not necessarily be helpful for our own decision-making process. But I will tell you that, you know, just kind of from what we're hearing in the community, it has not been a problem in other states. But we can get you some more specific information to the extent it is reported coming back. With respect to SB 42 and Senator Umberg's proposed legislation, right now, it does mirror, for the most part, the model rule for ABA. And we have been working really closely with his staff just to keep them in the loop as far as, you know, what we're doing, offering our assistance, sharing the public comments that we're hearing, and just trying to keep the lines of communication open as best as we can. Our goal is, you know, we're hoping we will not end up with a situation where we have a rule and the legislation is different, and we really are working to try to achieve the best result here. We can't really predict what's going to happen yet, but we're doing what we can so far to keep those communication lines open and try to understand what kind of concerns we might be hearing from the legislative staff. So far, we haven't heard any direct feedback on our particular, our particular, most recent proposals, I should say, but with respect to the staff recommendation, which would make it a little bit broader than what CO-CRAC had recommended. I did hear some preliminary feedback that, just kind of generally speaking, the legislature was concerned that CO-CRAC's draft was too narrow. But they did come back and expand it a little bit after that initial public comment draft that they had circulated back in January. So I'm hopeful that the benefit of all of this information that we're providing to staff, legislative staff, will be helpful in this conversation.
And the only thing I would add, Brandon, is we're obviously in communication with the court as well. So I don't think either the state bar or the court would like to see an outcome where we have a rule and a statute that differ from one another. So we're working hard to make sure that doesn't happen. I can't tell you like what would happen if ultimately we get to that unfortunate result, but we are working diligently to avoid that outcome.
Just kind of certainly back on a cost issue. I know sometimes with legislation, there is a budgetary impact report. I know that we don't receive any funds from the general fund, but has there been any desire for the legislature to build that into, let's say, a general fund expenditure if we're being asked to fulfill this legislative mandate? Has there been any appetite or discussion in regards to that?
No. Oh, go ahead. Yeah, I think we've talked about it in terms of a general fund subsidy or support for this effort. And I think we are challenged by the fact that the data, such that it exists from other states, does not suggest there's going to be this massive increase in complaints. So I think at best, we would probably ask or try to come to an agreement that we would collect data on the impact of implementation of the rule or the statute if it got there. And then we'd have a mechanism to come and identify a corresponding funding need. And of course, we have many funding needs related to the Office of the Chief Child Counsel crew in our 2201 program that are already pending out there, and this would potentially be another one, but it's highly speculative at this point, which makes it a bit challenging.
I'll just add that it is really early in the legislative process. You know, the bill was introduced back in December. It hasn't been amended yet. And it hasn't been set for hearing, to my knowledge, yet. So it's, you know, we, as Erica mentioned, we tried to get our public comment process going earlier so that they could have the benefit of hearing what kind of public, you know, the public comments that are coming out, you know, the discussion, before they have the opportunity to amend and have their committee hearings. So we're hoping that can be informative, but it is pretty early for the legislative season so far.
I don't have any other questions, given that we're just sending this out for public comment. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Brandon. I see that trustee Noel's hand has gone up.
Thank you. I wondered if you had thought it would also be helpful for folks making comment or to help generate comments to add SB 42 into the comparison. I know it's tricky because it's written by Umberg or his staff or whatever. But if we have relations with them, maybe ask them to do a comparison for us, for SB 42, so that our population sees not only option one, option two, and the model rule, they see SB 42, which they may want to comment on as well, or accept as better than all the rest. I don't know. And that's good information, I think, for us to have and to be able to process how we're going to do this, once all of it comes back. I don't know. I mean, I'll bow to whatever decision is made. I just wanted to put it out there that one of the things that, to me, when I talk to legislators, is that they are going to want to have some kind of legislative control over us. I don't care how small it is, but they're going to want something. My intelligence tells me that Umberg really wants this bill. And if he gets a bill, and he gets a bill the way he has it, we're done. I mean, that's what we have to try to follow. So I think it would do well to have all of the comparisons on the table for the people that we are sending it out to and who will respond.
Thank you for the observation and the question, Greg. Let me turn it over to Erica or Bridgette if they want to address that. I mean, certainly, I would imagine that SB 42 is in one, is in one shape right now, right? It's one condition now, but I don't know the timing on revised language, setting of hearings. Could you please address those issues?
Sure, I'm happy to. That is my concern, too, is I like the idea a lot because what we did do, for what it's worth, with the CO-CRAC, when we released the original language from CO-CRAC, we also asked for public comment on 8.3, which is essentially what SB 42 is at this point. We didn't get a lot of response on that, Erica. Am I right? I mean, there were a couple comments on it, but not a lot. We can give this some more thought about how we might be able to do it, but what concerns me is that the bill will be amended in the midst of our public comment process. It probably will. And then I don't know where we land after that, but certainly, we could consider it when we cut, you know, this would be going out for a 45-day comment period. We'll come back in May. I'm trying to, we can think about how we might be able to get additional feedback on the current version of SB 42. In the interim, maybe we could do a hearing or, you know, I'm just thinking out loud, but trying to think of other ways that we can get some input on that.
And we could also just confer with Senator Umberg's staff and see, you know, get their reaction to the suggestion, because I also generally think it's a very good idea.
And before I get to trustee Broughton, I'll just editorialize here a little bit of like, good. I mean, this discussion, I think, is a good reminder of the importance of communication among the various actors on an issue like this, right? Whether it's the legislature, the court, or the state bar. I really do recognize and appreciate that it's happening at various levels. I observe and I feel that it's happening in an honest and a meaningful way, and that communication is necessary for, I think, the best result for the public, whether it takes the form of, or when it does take the form of a piece of legislation and/or a rule. Ideally, those things really do mesh together and give us something that we can use and that the public can have confidence in will advance consumers' interests, right? Ultimately, I think that's what we're looking for here. Trustee Broughton?
Thank you. This may be a little early in the discussion, but I want to throw these things out because it does concern me. This rule is actually applying to an attorney who himself or herself is not committing any criminal act or any act of fraud or anything like that. It's on an attorney who observes these types of things. Of course, I wonder how that would ever be proven, but what I think needs to be looked at, because if it's later determined that the attorney should- Should have reported this other attorney and didn't do that. Now that attorney is subject to discipline for not reporting. It kind of reminds me of the mandatory reporting statutes when you have um sort of sexual impropriety activities. You know, various people like teachers and whatnot that have to report these things. And so one of the things that occurs to me is that in those types of situations, um. The mandatory reporter can only get into trouble, if you will, if they don't report, even if they're wrong. I I wouldn't want as an attorney to, if I observed something and have to report it. To be subject to being sued or being subject, uh, if it's later determined that that other attorney didn't do something. So I think you'd have to consider some sort of uh um immunity, if you will. Um, for reporting something that you believe falls within this, within this rule. The other thing that I, and I look at this and my brain kind of goes crazy as a lawyer. Because I don't know uh wh- what is credible evidence? What is a substantial question? What is a criminal act? Speeding is a criminal act, by the way. Um, so I think at least what I read here, it's not a felony charge, it's a criminal act. So I think there needs to be a lot more definition into what we are requiring a. An an attorney to do as as we look at this. And it's it's also um. A situation where there has not been a crime committed, if you will. In other words. There's not been a a crime that's been filed by any uh DA's office or the US Attorney's Office. Because nowadays, you know, we have the rule that requires, even if a person is not been convicted or there's been no probable cause finding. Uh, it has to be reported to the state bar. So this is for a situation where there's actually been. No crimes actually committed. Um, so I I really am concerned about the definitions um and moving forward. And some form of immunity for an attorney who has to, who does report these things under this rule. And later is determined perhaps that uh those things didn't happen.
Um, I can speak very briefly to the immunity concern. Uh, so the Business and Professions Code, so there there's immunity versus having to uh. Defend in a lawsuit, right? So those are two separate things. However, um, there is a Business and Professions Code statute that discusses the fact that um a lawyer will not um. That there's essentially uh a defense for filing a complaint so long as that complaint is not far false and malicious. So the lawyer should not be liable for doing that. Now, there are other jurisdictions that um, there are other concerns surrounding this, you know. There are, there's some case law that addresses the fact that if you report on um. There was a case where a lawyer in a different jurisdiction reported on. Um, a a different partner in their law firm for um overbilling. Under the duty to report in that jurisdiction, which required, you know, the reporting of any violation. And they were terminated from their their uh job in the firm. So that's separate and apart. Um, and and a separate consideration from what exists in our statute, which essentially says that a lawyer um. Should not be liable for filing a complaint with the state bar. Um, and then in the inverse, it's it's a, it's a, there's a criminal penalty for filing a false or malicious reporter complaint. So that may address some of your concerns, uh trustee Broughton, and that's addressed by a comment eight in the. Proposed eight point three both alternatives.
And will those things sort of be incorporated into the rule itself? So that the attorney who is reading this and realizes they now have a duty. That they that they know what those rules are.
Yeah, so comment eight provides the reference to that statute. So if you were to look at comment eight of the proposed alternatives, it says that communications to the state bar. Were relating to misconduct or privilege and no lawsuit predicated thereon may be instituted against any person. And then it provides the statutory reference to that, which is Business and Professions Code sixty ninety four.
Okay, good. I didn't have that to read this morning, so.
Mark, thank you for the question. Erica, thank you for uh the the answer. And just a reminder to everybody, of course, that. Uh, this is at a very preliminary stage of putting this out for public comment. So certainly. Uh, folks who are are concerned about or have questions similar to what trustee Broughton has just raised. Uh, we encourage you uh to offer your written comments during the public comment period so that the board um can take those into consideration along with all the rest. Uh, trustee, good, your hand is raised.
Very quickly, this is sort of in the vein of it might be a little early, but I wanted just to get this out there. Um. Uh, to my mind, alternative two isn't really workable, um, because it's too broad and in particular, the language of. Reckless misrepresentation, I think, is rife um for misuse. Um, and weaponization in civil litigation. Um, I worry that in private litigation, uh, where unfortunately, there's a great deal. Of incivility. Um, I know we've all been trying to deal with that problem um and make civil the profession more civil. But there is a lot of incivility um. That um this will just be used as another tool in the toolbox for a party to win. Their civil suit um to try to apply pressure to another lawyer or opposing counsel um in that. Um, and uh to Mr. Tony's point and Mr. Stallings' point. About the state bar's resources and use of our precious resources, we wouldn't want to use those. On um, you know, matters, we wouldn't want to waste the bar's precious resources. On simply looking at gamesmanship by parties in civil litigation. You know, we want to focus on protection of the public. And we don't want to um participate in some sort of jockeying for position in an underlying civil litigation. So. To my mind, I don't think alternative two is workable. I'm I'm very supportive of the concept generally. Um, and I'm I'm favorably disposed towards uh alternative one. Uh, I think lawyers are often in the best position to report. On instances of misconduct. Um, and so I I welcome that as a useful uh tool moving forward. Uh, but just wanted to register my my comment about alternative two. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Trustee Noel, your hand went up.
Yes, I'm sorry to raise again, but I I was wondering whether. Uh, th- this presentation that we that we received. Um, if if, does it go out with all the other uh information about eight point three? Does the public get to see this?
The PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, yes.
Yes, my understanding is that when the um public comment is posted on the State Bar website, um, the the board agenda item, which is. Large because of the number of public comments Co-Prac already received, um, will be included as well as the the presentation.
Luisa. But but more more than that, Greg, we're doing um a whole public um. Um, public comment campaign for this item that will include uh the development of. Uh, kind of a site where there'll be plain language information explaining the different uh versions. An attempt to actually get public comment from the public, not just from licensees. On this rule. So there'd be a host of ways for folks to access, not just the materials presented today. But also further explanatory information.
Thank you, Leah.
Thank you all. Um. Mark Broughton, your hand went up again. Is that to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by trustee Noel.
Uh, to approve the resolutions. Um, offered by a staff in the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, whomever put that up, if it was you Alfredo.
There you go.
Therefore, the board's consideration uh is the resolution, which is essentially to put out for public comment. Uh, that was a just, which has just been presented. Um, very capably by Mr. Doherty and Ms. Grant. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second the motion, it's okay.
Trustee Cisneros, thank you. Seeing no further discussion or debate, we have a role, please.
Broughton?
Yes.
Buena Ventura, not present. Chen, not present. Cisneros?
Hi.
Good?
Yes.
Noel?
I.
Shelby?
I.
Soell. Uh, trustee Soell had to step out. Stallings?
I.
Tony?
I.
Duran?
Hi.
Eight i's, zero nays, the motion carries.
So that number eight uh reminds me that we are getting close to losing a quorum, so I'm going to. Uh, ask the rest of the trustees indulgence to hang in there with us until we do a lunch break. I'm thinking probably just a little bit before eleven thirty. Uh, trustee Tony, were you asking for a another break or is there something else? We're good to move on. All right, good enough. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to item sixty dash two, which is the report on the random audit of the Office of Chief Chief Trial Counsel files. Closed between March one, twenty twenty one and August thirty one, twenty twenty one. And the response from the Office of the Chief Trial Counsel to that random audit. This is a presentation only. And I believe Mr. Cardona is with us again.
Thank you. Um, so this is the latest in a series of reports on random audits and in particular, random audits that are attempting to catch up. Um, with uh audits that were not done during the pandemic. So this actually applies to files as Chair Duran mentioned. Closed between March first, twenty twenty one and August thirty first, twenty twenty one. So we're still um roughly two years behind. Um, we're hoping to finish that catch up in the near future and get back on the regular schedule. Um, so we've provided you with a report. Um, the auditor prepares a report. Um, that is a report that can be disclosed publicly that describes the outcome of her audit. We've provided that as attachment A. Um, and summarize that in our response in the report. Um, two things I wanted to focus on, which is one. Um, in this case, there was a recommendation to reopen eleven out of uh two hundred and fifty six files that were audited. Um, that was roughly four point two percent of the audited files. I've provided you in the report with the similar figures for the audits going back to two thousand seventeen. Um, as you can see, it's within that range, and indeed, our target metric on this is four point three percent. So the reopening rate is consistent with the target that is based in part on that historical data. Um, once we get those recommendations, we review those files individually um and look at them of the eleven files recommended for reopening. Um, we've reviewed those. We're going to go ahead and reopen six of those. Um, five are not being reopened. Um, we've set out the reasons in our report um for three of those. Um, the only failure was a failure to advise the complainant of the result of the investigation. Um, we're going ahead and doing that, but it doesn't require that we reopen the cases. Um, in two others, um, the auditor took issue with our use of a warning letter based on our review. Um, we think that fell within prosecutorial discretion, and while there can be a disagreement as to how that discretion should be exercised, we don't see a basis for reopening um. Um, in those circumstances. Of the six being reopened, um, three involved OCTC failing to follow up with a complainant who offered to provide additional invest information. We're opening reopening those to. Um, see about getting that additional information. Those shouldn't have been closed with those open uh in one. Um, we failed to provide an opportunity for the complainant's son to join in the complaint that should have been offered. Um, and another, we missed a substantive issue regarding a conflict of interest. That'll be reopened to address that. Um, and in the final one, we prematurely closed the complaint without um knowing the outcome of a sanctions order um that was relevant to the case. And so we're reopening to consider. Um, the outcome of that sanctions order. Um, there are an additional eight that the auditor suggested we review to consider possibly reopening. We reviewed those and we'll be reopening two. Um, six we will not. Um, so that's basically a summary with respect to reopening. Um, the auditor's report, as it normally does, then went through and identified a number of areas where they thought. That there were mistakes in individual files and areas where they thought training could be recommended as a general matter. We've outlined those general training areas. Um, we will proceed with doing training on. Um, I think virtually all of the areas that the auditor recommended. Um, and um, we will be reporting back to the board. On implementation of that training. In other words, where we are um at the July meeting. Um, in at the May meeting, we expect to report back on a number of the other recommendations, both from this audit and from. Um, the previous audit, we had originally scheduled reports to the board and though on the previous audit for January and March, but given the intervening audit, we thought it made sense to put those off and have a combined report to the board in May. On where we are with respect to um implementing the auditor's recommendations from both the prior audit and this audit. Um, with that, I'm happy to take questions.
Audits abound indeed. Questions for the chief trial counsel. On this particular audit. Comments by the board, Mr. Tony?
Thank you. Um. George, could you please remind me um when you started?
I started October fourth, twenty twenty one.
Okay, okay. Well, 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 first of all, I I I really appreciate that as you gave your report. You um, as the chief trial counsel are that you take responsibility. For uh remedies and fixes and improvements. And you never once said, it was before I started. So I mean, that was somebody else, okay? And no, I I just appreciate that. I I want to validate and acknowledge. That that's that's um, that's what leadership does, right? You 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 you're here now, you take responsibility now. I I I I just wanted to acknowledge that. And um, that, you know, I I I know I'll be looking at, um, you know, as. You um institute various trainings and and new procedures. It 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 it'll be interesting. I I'm I'm hoping to see over time some sort of actually ramping down. Of the cases that the independent auditor for these random audits uh recommends that you take another look at. So. It's just a comment. Thank you for uh exercising leadership on this.
Thank you, trustee Tony. George, we look like you're going to say something, please.
No, I was just going to say thanks and see if there are any other questions.
Okay, seeing none. We will move on to the next item on our agenda, which I believe is also the chief trial counsel.
It is. Um, so uh, this is item sixty dash three, and it relates to the board's directive regarding archiving of prior closed complaints. Um, for the board's recollection, um, in July of twenty twenty, um, the board adopted of a dr- a directive. Um, that we exempt uh that we, well, the board adopted a policy. Um, in response to the Farcus report and the Robinson follow up on that suggesting some potential remedies. Um, to the Farcus findings of disparities and discipline imposed based on race and gender. One of the um recommended remedies that the board adopted was that OCTC in general archive. Um, closed complaints um essentially that were five years or more um old. Um, and this was based on a finding that complaints as well, the numbers of complaints, there were disparities um based on race and gender. Um, so that policy was implemented. At the time, the board directed the implementation of that policy, um, the directive exempted from the archiving process. Closed complaints that were resolved with a warning letter. Directional letter, resource letter, or agreement in lieu of discipline. Um, in light of recent changes to how we implement non-public forms of discipline, which we discussed um at the prior board meeting in some length. Um, we're recommending two changes to that exemption from archiving. Um, the first relates to ru- resource letters, um, and we're recommending that the exemption from archiving no longer apply to resource letters. In other words, we're recommending that we. Archive cases that are closed and resolved with resource letters. And then we're recommending that adding to the exemption be an exemption from the archiving process for cases that are resolved with an admonition. Um, which is another form of non-discipline, but one that we uh is essentially equivalent to, or the circumstances that warrant it are essentially the same as would warrant. A warning letter or an agreement in lieu of discipline. So we're recommending that. Admonitions be exempted from the archiving process, just as are warning letters, direction, warning letters and agreements in lieu of discipline. Um, so turning first to resource letters, the reason for this recommendation is that. Um, in response to the last state audit, um, and in response to our effort to do more preventative work. Um, we have started sending out resource letters in more instances without any finding um that there is in fact any misconduct. Um, and in particular, we are now sending, as a result of the last state audit, we are now sending resource letters out. In every bank reportable action case and in every client trust account related complaint case where we've previously notified the attorney that they're under. Um, investigation. So a resource letter no longer in those cases and in some other cases serves as an indicator that there is. So a resource letter no longer in those cases and in some other cases serves as an indicator that there is something wrong um that should exempt it from the archiving process. And so our view is that it's essentially equivalent to a straight closure in those cases, just with a preventative effort. Um, and to continue with our what I expect will be an increase in our use of resource letters in similar circumstances. It doesn't seem right to have resources letters exempted from the archiving process. Um, and so we are recommending that that be changed. Um, with respect to admonitions, um admonitions is our another form of non-disciplinary resolution, but one that um, both for either us or the State Bar Court to impose an admonition, typically we require that there be information um indicating that there is some form of misconduct essentially equivalent to a warning letter or an agreement of lieu of discipline. And so we believe that those should be added to the list of things that are exempted from the archiving process. Um, so that's in a nutshell, this proposal, um, and we've included a a proposed resolution um, that essentially would make these changes and uh adopt uh make clear the archiving process or the directive as to archiving that accords with the current practice that's occurred over the last years with those changes. Um, and with that, I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, George. Trustees, any questions or comments about what George has just presented? Don't see any uh, Mr. Trustee Tony, there you are.
Thank you very much. Um, I continue to have concerns about this policy. I understand that the goal of it is to correct uh uh racial bias in particular in um the disciplinary system. And even if I can agree with that, that it might help. What I cannot agree with is that the five years is in perpetuity. Cause that's how it's written here. Because then it implies that the state bar disciplinary system is fundamentally racist, will always be racist, and we will always need to compensate for that with this uh uh five year um archiving of prior complaints. And I'm not willing to settle for that to be the case. Now, what my recommendation is would be to say that we say any um uh a um you know, any, any uh closed complaints, reportable actions, you know, you know, these, you know, this proposal would um have five years, but have an ending date for that five years. Okay, and and say that after um twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, pick a year. But that um, uh, you know, you know, you know, something where it's not gonna be that the five years is a moving target. I I I I don't think it's acceptable that the state bar disciplinary system would continue to have race bias or in the long term. This ought to be a short term remedy, not a permanent remedy. So I would like to see, um, I I'd be very happy to say, yes, if it's before um uh tw- uh twenty eighteen, fine. But we're not, we're, you know, we're not, we're we're not going to keep moving the goalpost here.
I briefly answer.
Please.
So I I will note two things. One, when this art directive was originally adopted and that's carried over into the current resolution, it was adopted as an interim reform. Um, my understanding and and perhaps Leah can speak to this, but my understanding are that there are plans to relook at um racial disparities at some point in the near future. Um, and I think that might provide the appropriate um forum and time for essentially Mr. Tony, I think what you're suggesting is essentially an ultimate sunsetting of the archiving policy. Um, and I think that that reexamination, if that is in fact planned to occur, would be a time when additional data would be presented. And at that point, the Board could always make a decision to sunset the archiving policy.
Yeah, I I agree. I think um our operational plan indicates, or even the strategic plan itself, that we will re uh conduct the Farcus study on racial disparities in the discipline system in twenty twenty four. And I think that would be an appropriate time when those results come out to revisit all of the various um interventions that have been put in place subsequent to Farcus one, two thousand nineteen.
Farcus one. Uh, for those of you who were around uh when the Farcus study came out and then I'm looking at the screen and seeing several nodding heads, in particular trustees, Stallings and Good uh who were on the Ad Hoc Commission of the Discipline System, that all of this sounds very familiar. Um, and indeed a continuation of uh a lot of work by a lot of people on, I think, what we all agreed at the time, and I continue to agree is uh an important issue that the State Bar must address. Uh, the the fact that it can and and will be re-informed by refreshed data, I think, is a key point in addressing what trustee Tony has just identified as an issue for him at least. Um, and perhaps uh Leah, if if there is just something we can do to assure that in the record, uh, whatever record that would be, whether it's our minutes or this resolution or something that um you know, one very specific purpose of the renewed study in two thousand twenty four is to take a look at the archiving uh directive in particular. Uh, trustee Tony, I hope that would satisfy your concern. I couldn't tell what that is.
It it does not address my concern, but um, you know, uh, we we, you know, I'm ready to take a vote on it.
Uh, so that means, uh, let me just check with the other trustees, anything further on this or any other issue um, related to the resolution we're about to see on the screen. Don't see any hands going up. Madam Secretary, thank you, or Mr. Mr. Hernandez, thank you. Going to assume that the trustees have reviewed this prior to the meeting, and so this is really um for the benefit of the public. They have a motion, the resolution as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Cisneros, second by Good. Let me have the role, please.
Rotten.
Yes.
Buena Ventura, not present. Chen, not present. Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Shelby?
Abstain.
Soell? Not present. Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Nay.
Duran?
Aye.
Six ayes, one no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. It takes us to the last item on our uh rad agenda, which is a presentation only, so no action from the Board required here, but I hope that we do engage in some discussion about uh, or continue discussion indeed about the performance metrics of the Office of Chief Child Counsel. Mr. Cardona, welcome back.
Thank you. Um, I'll pull up the PowerPoint. Um, did you want to take this now? It's eleven twenty six. I don't know what your schedule is.
So let me just look around the screen and I I think it would be great to just power through this and then and then get to lunch. Um, I understand that trustee Soell may be able to join us um within the twelve o'clock hour or so. Uh, it's sort of a nice stopping point after this in my mind. I see a lot of nodding heads. All right, wonderful. Thank you.
That's that's perfect. Then I will go ahead and share my screen. Um. Can everybody see that? We can nod, just indicate that that's up. All right, um, so we're gonna go through and go through the performance metrics for Q four, twenty twenty two. Um, a reminder that these are available for viewing in an interactive dashboard that is updated, um, at least on a quarterly basis. We last presented on November seventeenth, twenty twenty two um regarding the third quarter of twenty twenty two. Um, so here is the um initial, this is the cover page um that has the summary of metrics um for O C T C. Um, as you can see, um, uh, blue indicates an improvement from the last quarter. Um, so in all the metrics um uh across the board, except for the twenty twenty two backlog, which I will discuss in some more detail. Um, uh, they're in the blue reflecting a an improvement from the last quarter. Um. There are, there is one that I wanted to mention, which is the caseload clearance rate. Um, that is at ninety five percent. Our target there is to keep that at least at a hundred percent so that we are not building up our inventory. Um, as you can see, that is below our target, even though it is a significant improvement over the last quarter. Um, and I'll talk about in a later slide why I think that is um and give you some numbers. Um, but in essence, um, we have seen an increase over the last um six months of twenty twenty two and the first month of twenty twenty three in the number of complaints that are coming in. Um, we're at rates that we haven't seen in any previous years, even going back to twenty nineteen before um the pandemic. And so I think that that is what is driving that, and I'll show you some numbers on that in a second. With respect to the backlog, um, this number that is on the screen, the twenty twenty two backlog, this is a new number. It's not one that we've looked at before in terms of backlog. Um, this number is the total open number of cases that are more than a hundred and eighty days or more than three hundred and sixty five days. Um, this is troubling, um, because it shows that our inventory of cases that are at a point in time when they're in backlog is um, has grown um from twenty twenty one and from twenty twenty. Um, this is the first time we've looked at this number um in this way. Um, and if I can, I'll go to the next screen um to give you a comparison. This is the table from the A D R um table S R one B, which is used to report on um cases that have met or not met goals. And we reported there as cases not beating goals, cases that were closed or filed during the calendar year. I've pulled up the calendar year screen here. Um, outside of these timeframes, closed or filed outside a hundred and eighty days for non-complex cases or outside three hundred and sixty five days for complex cases. In the A D R, we reported combined figures for both O C T C cases and cases handled by the um outside special counsel that they go to if we have conflicts. And so those were the numbers there. What I've put down below in the blue chart is actually these same numbers, in other words, reporting the same way for just O C T C cases for the three, three years, calendar year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. And there you can see we've actually improved in our reporting uh that would be under the standards we use for table S R one B. Um, in each year, twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty one, twenty twenty two. Um, the number of cases that we have closed or filed that have been outside the timeframe has decreased both in number and in percentage. Now, ultimately, our target for this is to try to get to ten percent. Um, which is the target that we set for ourselves in the case processing standards proposal that was submitted under S B two eleven. So we are still above that. Um, so all this said, um, this is one um backlog measure, the one that's used in S R one B. Um, what's reported on our dashboard now is another measure. Um, going forward, I've talked with, and I think we're going to be putting on the dashboard both measures so that we can look at both. Uh, both the open inventory that is outside of a hundred and eighty or three hundred and sixty five days and the cases filed or closed that are outside the hundred and eighty or three hundred and sixty five days, and so we can monitor them. Um, and in twenty twenty three, look at both those numbers and see if we can try and bring both numbers down. Um, so that's uh basically the backlog um numbers. Um, turning to our next slide, in terms of inventory and case age, um, you can see that our inventory has increased. Um. Um, and in particular, if you look at Q three and Q four of twenty twenty two, you'll see an increase in our overall case inventory um and an increase in the percentage of cases within that or inventory that are greater than a hundred and eighty days old. Um, this is consistent with that, that three thousand seventy three backlog number on the first page. Um, and again, getting to why this is, you can see the longer term trend over more years, not just those years. Um, why this is, um, so here I've put together the numbers that show um on a monthly basis in the top chart on the right, we see the monthly numbers of total complaints we're receiving and the monthly total of reportable actions, which includes bank reportable actions. Um, and then the monthly totals, if I take those seven months um, and I take that and I project out um for fiscal year twenty twenty three as a whole, so taking those seven months. And here I've put it on a fiscal year basis because we have more data. So the fiscal year being treated as the fiscal year that runs from July first to June of the next year. So if I take the seven months from July to January and I project that to get a projection for um, the entire fiscal year twenty twenty three, what we're projecting is that we're gonna have eighteen thousand complaints and reportable actions this year, which is roughly seventeen or eighteen hundred more than we've gotten in the most, the year we've had the most ever before, which was twenty nineteen. And in twenty nineteen, we saw that was the year that we saw an increase um based in part on the fact that we had opened up our online portal. Um, and it was the last year that was pre print, pre pandemic. So we seem to have bounced back to pre pandemic levels and indeed to be even higher in terms of the inflow in cases. And I do believe that that is driving um, the increase in our inventory. Um, and we'll need to see if we can uh find a way to uh uh increase our case clearance, even despite the fact of the increase in the number of incoming complaints and work down our inventory and in particular, work down our inventory that is exceeding a hundred and eighty days or three hundred and sixty five days. Um, and that's gonna be what we work on for the rest of the year to try and get that done. In terms of case closure rate, this is showing that by um over time, so you can see the trends. Um, and you can see that we were at our hundred percent, but that has gone down. Um, it's fluctuated and now we're back to the ninety five percent. Um, the case age at closure, um, you can see that our case age at closure um has generally seen um yeah, for the median basically staying the same for the average, a slight slight decline as we have focused on trying to get rid of some of the extraordinarily old cases in our inventory, which I think is what's driving the average down um as opposed to the median. Then you can see that over a longer term as well. Um, you can see uh the longer term trend here. Um, in terms of cases passing through each phase, this looks at cases in intake, investigation and charging um to see if we can see trends with respect to um case age in each of those. Um. We can see that intake um has essentially stayed roughly the same still within that twenty to forty day range, which is what we look to keep our intake um cases in investigation. We can see a slight decline in time in both the median and the average days. That's typically where cases, that's what drives primarily, most of our cases close after an investigation. And so the case time in investigation is what largely drives our aggregate uh time stats. Um, in terms of charging, um, you can see um there has been a slight increase in the average and median time there, and that's something else that we're going to be focusing on. Um, there was a spike in that in uh Q two, twenty twenty two. Um. And that was the result, I believe, of a a couple of respondents who had large numbers of cases that we closed in that quarter. Um, so again, that's something we're gonna be looking at, um, and this is just showing that over a longer term trend um so that you can see the longer term trend. Um, in terms of quality, um, we look at three measures for quality. Um, the percent of cases that the complaint review unit recommends for reopening. Um, and you can see that um uh that's been an improvement. Um, we also look at the percent of cases, the random audit recommends reopening. Our target there is four point three percent, and we've remained below that. Um, similarly, we're now back down below our target of two percent for complaint review unit reopens. For Walker petitions, which is the final level of review for people who disagree and go to the Supreme Court to seek review of our closure decisions, our target is to have none of those open or ninety nine percent um not open. We had one um that was uh one Walker petition that was granted in Q two, twenty twenty two. Um, but as you can see, for the balance, um, we have had none issued. Um, and so it was an aggregate over that entire time period. We have met our target of ninety nine percent, I believe, for that one quarter. Um, we were at ninety eight point two percent or something, or for that year, we were at ninety eight point two percent as a result of that one Walker petition that was granted. Um, so these are our quality measures. Um, in terms of complaining witnesses and their satisfaction, uh going back to the question that Mr. Tony raised earlier, terms of complainant satisfaction, um, we do a survey of complainants to ask them to agree or disagree. in terms of complainant satisfaction, um, we do a survey of complainants to ask them to agree or disagree um with a series of questions relating to two general areas, access and fairness. This is a compilation of the results of that. Um, as you can see, in terms of um access, our respondent averages are roughly at the high end of between three and four, which is basically um complainants generally agreeing, um neither agreeing or disagreeing or to somewhat agreeing um with them having sufficient access to the system. Our fairness numbers are lower than that. Our fairness numbers are at the um generally between uh two and three. Um, uh indicating that people uh either somewhat disagree or don't agree or do disagree um with fairness. And this reflects um in general, complainants whose complaints are closed um tend in most instances to disagree with us and not be happy with that. Um, you know, we are, we do try in our closing letters to explain why we have closed it, to attempt to ensure that they understand the reasons why, but there is um, you know, uh, there are um issues and complainants are unhappy. Um, we will see what we can do to bring that up. Um, in terms of process, but at the end of the day, some of this relates to simply disagreement over substance um and our decision to close. Um, finally, the last, the last metric we look at is turnover rates within O C T C as compared to the rest of the state bar. Um, we had a spike of uh turnover amongst our investigators um in uh Q one and Q two of twenty twenty two, where we lost significant numbers of investigators. And in particular, there was concern because we were losing significant numbers of experienced investigators. Um, and we have had to replace those with less experienced investigators, which in turn has an impact on the speed with which cases are handled because the experience level goes down. Um, we have more recently turned that around. I think we're back to kind of a more normal turnover um that is more consistent with that of the state bar as a whole. Um, so uh the final slide is a showing of our actual disciplinary filings. Um, in terms in three areas where we file, we file notice of disciplinary charges, we may do stipulations to facts and discipline um and or we can transmit criminal convictions. And so this gives you a uh sense of the number of cases that we are actually filing and pursuing disciplinary charges on in any of those three ways. Um, as you can see, um, for Q four twenty twenty two, we saw an improvement uh or an increase in the number of filings of notice of disciplinary charges and stipulations to packs of discipline, a decrease in criminal conviction transmittals, looking at the overall numbers. Um, uh, you can see that we had um numbers roughly equivalent, looking back over all of these quarters. Um, so that's, that's where we are on that. Um, so I believe that's the last slide. I am happy to try and address any questions and field any discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Cardon and Vice Chair Stallings, please.
Okay, thank you, George, for that presentation. Um, do we have an idea or a sense of if uh there's a particular increase in an area that these complaints should be filed in as far as particular types of cases or alleged misconduct? I'm just thinking back to the foreclosure um wave that we experienced. Um, are there similar trends going on now, maybe even pandemic related uh that we can try and address in other, other ways?
I don't think we are seeing any trend similar to the foreclosure. In other words, we're not seeing any one particular area where we're seeing significantly large number of complaints. We just seem to be getting more complaints kind of across the range of what we get. And it's not clear, and I think we're going to have to wait and see, you know, probably another six months or so to see whether this is just basically uh pent up. In other words, people during the pandemic, for whatever reason, didn't file complaints, and now we're getting some backlog of complaints that built up or whether this is an ongoing trend for the future. Um, I don't think the seven months we've seen so far, kind of the end of last year uh is enough to make that determination, and that's something we'll have to look at. Um, after the next six months, I think we may have a better idea of that.
This, it just offers a comment. I know that I've said this in the past, but, you know, many jurisdictions shut down as far as their handling of cases, litigating cases, and there's a significant backlog of criminal cases that I'm aware of in other, you know, counties throughout California. And so um, that not asking for a comparison to be done between our backlog and like other, other counties, because in some ways it's apples to oranges, but just really want to commend staff for um, you know, for showing up to work for working through a pandemic and keeping the ball rolling as as best possible as we adopt to uh work from home uh policies, um, and just some of the just the slowdown that was associated with shutting everything down for for a period of time. So I know you guys are working hard, so just please pass along uh thanks to your staff.
I will, and I I will say that I think the pandemic, actually, the decrease in complaints coming in actually gave an opportunity to work down some of the of the cases that had built up. So, um, now we'll see what happens when the, when the complaint inflow builds back up.
Thank you, Brandon. Thank you, George. Any other questions or comments from the trustees? Okay, um, this is a reminder to me that I keep meaning to bookmark uh the dashboard on my computer because every time I go to it, it's, it's very instructive and I appreciate the ability to manipulate uh what I'm looking at and 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 look at things from different angles. So uh truly is a valuable tool, Mr. Cardone. I appreciate all the work that uh you and the rest of the staff have put into putting that data in there.
And huge thanks to the Mission Advancement and Accountability Division, because they're the ones who have done the hard work on putting together the dashboard, and we are continuing to refine it and update it to uh as we go along and learn more, so.
Thank you for that. Happy to be corrected there. Okay, uh, it looks like we are at a place where we can break for lunch. I'm showing eleven forty five. Uh, if we could reconvene at twelve thirty on the dot, I'll have a forty five minute lunch and see you back here then. Any, any last parting words? It looks like not. Okay, thank you, everyone. See you shortly.
Thank you. We are now recording.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, it looks like we have maybe one or two folks who are still going to come in, but since we have a quorum, we're going to go ahead and get started. We're moving on to uh the seven hundred series on our agenda. Seven oh one is proposed amendments to the State Bar rules seven point five two and seven point six zero regarding the judicial judicial nominees evaluation commission operations. Bridget Grammy, looks like she's ready to go. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, yes, me again. Um, thank you. So this item, I, you know, the details are in the memo, but the, as you all have probably realized with respect to the budget, um, the Jenny Commission is really, has really been an outlier among all the subentities with respect to its operations. It's been kind of exempt from many of the um reforms that went through in the Governance and the Public Interest Task Force with respect to subentities. And we've been really taking a closer look at Jenny operations over the past year to improve efficiencies and, you know, maximize the amount of candidates they're able to evaluate within each cycle. Um, and so we do have a larger um package of more comprehensive rule revisions that will be coming your way and may to reflect some recommendations that staff have um with respect to Jenny. But we do, we are asking for an early um consideration of these two particular rules, seven point five two and seven point six zero, which we think are necessary to consider now and release for public comment in order to implement the new twenty twenty three budget. Um, in that budget, a- as you probably recall, eh, we trimmed down or the board voted to um trim the available expenditures for Jenny meetings. Um, they typically had been meeting, they meet every other month, six times a year, typically for two days, and we have been accommodating two hotel nights um for each of those meetings. And so with the new budget, it's just going to be one night of hotel. And in doing that, uh, it has become clear that we do have to amend um rule seven point six zero, which at absent unusual circumstances requires investigators on Jenny to present in person their reports to the commission on the, the candidates that they're evaluating. So that's one role that we would like to amend in order to start um at the, you know, as soon as possible to just be accommodating one hotel night and and um for that. And then the, the other one is um rule seven point five two has to do with interviews. Um, that rule also requires absent unusual circumstances that candidates be interviewed in person. And since uh the pandemic, uh, the commission has been conducting these interviews on Zoom, and it's been working very well. It's saved a lot of money and also it, you know, not only for the state bar, but for the candidates themselves who would have had to float the cost of their travel to either the bars, L A or San Francisco office. And so the budget also takes into consideration the continued operations as we have been doing for the past few years of um in per uh Zoom interviews instead of in person. So at this point, we're just requesting that the board release for public comments and amendments to those two rules that would permit Zoom interviews and also um meetings if necessary, so that we can um implement the budget. And I'm happy to answer additional questions.
Thank you, Bridget. Any questions? Trustee Shelby.
Hi, I have a couple of questions and comments. Um, particularly as the, as the appointment, one of the appointment liaisons. Um, and I'm going to open up with this comment. You know, in our audit committee today, we had the opportunity and in the board also had the opportunity to approve the fourth quarter piece and and I've been thinking about this at length as a public member volunteer, right, as it relates to the time and the opportunity that I get to serve. And I've been thinking it from the standpoint that um and trying to really quantify it. And I know we talked about this as it relates to the budget. But, you know, I feel like balancing the budget on, and I'm, I'm probably going to say this in a, in an interesting way, but balancing the budget as it relates to travel on the back of volunteers just feels like a very challenging precedent. And I'm curious if the rest of organizations that do, you know, the rest of boards and commissions in the state of California have taken the same precedence. And so are we following precedence as it relates to other commissions? As it relates to other public agencies and how they engage with public members and with volunteers, and we all are volunteers. But I say that um in lieu of my questions. And so my first question, Bridget, is, is this directive, and I understand forty five minute comment period, so I know we're not making a decision, but does this um direction include inside and input from Jenny leadership and Jenny commissioners? And this was something that was discussed collectively as a group?
Uh, thank you for the comments and questions, Melanie. Uh, in my attempt to just briefly talk about this, I, you know, I admitted some important details there. So yeah, we have been talking with the Jenny Commission for quite some time, and a lot of these recommendations that we're making, including the cutting down of the, of the meetings, which I'll explain in a minute. You know, they've, they've come to the forefront now because of the budget, but really they are things that we've been working on for over a year, well before the budget really became an issue. And it really just has to do with improving, you know, just streamlining things and being able to take on additional candidates, as I mentioned, you know, at the beginning of last year, uh, the Judicial Appointment Secretary from the Governor's Office talked to us about the large number of judicial vacancies that they have right now in the state of California and encouraged us to be able to work with the Jenny Commission to take on more um candidates per cycle. So that's really what kind of started this whole process of us looking at the way that they conduct their meetings. Are they operating as efficiently as possible? What can we do as staff? What kind of operations can we do to improve the way that the meetings are running in general to be? You know, and recognizing that with the Jenny Commission particularly, and I know you know this, trustee Shelby, because of your work on appointments. It is a significant workload for the, for the volunteers, and they really take on a lot, and it, it is a lot of work. So, um, but with, with all of that, you know, we have, it, it, there, there, let's see, how can I, how can I explain this? They, the way that they operate their meetings, um, because of, because of the highly confidential nature of what they do, right? They, they have their evaluating judicial candidates, all of the, the whole process is highly confidential. Leading up to this point, they did not ever distribute candidate reports and to each other in advance of the meeting. Um, and so with the, the way that they operate then were to read their reports that they had written out loud to each other verbatim for the entire meeting. And that takes, that would take up a full two days sometime, you know, on a Friday and a Saturday um just to get the reports read out loud. Once we started observing and trying to think about how we might be able to do this more efficiently, we were able to work with the, with commission leadership, and they really have been great about taking on new ideas and thinking about new ways to do things. And we um, we implemented the SharePoint website so that we can up, we can make these reports available in advance of the meetings for them to review. And then they're not like downloadable or something that you could leave on a printer. They just live on the screen only. And so that helps alleviate this confidentiality issue and permits the meetings to run without having to read the whole report out loud. So they can focus more on the discussion of the candidate and not take up so much time just reading. Once we've implemented that change, it's become clear that they don't really need a full two days of meetings in order to conduct their business, number one. And also, um, it, yeah, I mean, I, I guess that's really the, the biggest thing. They can really focus more on, on the content. It's just not taking as long as it used to take to do this. In response to your question about um what the commission, you know, whether the leadership has been involved. They have been involved in our conversations. The commission um and the leadership have been really hesitant to make some of these changes, like they, you know, they're concerned about whether they're giving everybody a fair shake because we're not reading all the reports out loud, you know, things are changing. It's, it's that, that's giving them concerns. But I think at the end of the day, these, these improved efficiencies, the reports have been improved. Um, I think the process is improved. And that is, that, that is what's driving this much more than the budget itself. The other issue is that they just have traditionally met on Fridays and Saturdays. And that is really different, as I mentioned at the beginning, back in twenty eighteen, the board adopted a policy that we should avoid, you know, state, the Board of Trustees included, Saturday meetings unless absolutely necessary should not be held. The Jenny Commission was exempted from that. But at this point, you know, it takes, it does take additional funding, but also it is, it's an issue of well-being for staff to have to attend on Saturday meetings. We think that this business can be conducted largely in a day, maybe a little bit extra. Plus the budget, plus the efficiencies, these are all the different kinds of policy considerations that we've been taking into consideration over the past year and trying to really work carefully with the leadership and with the commission in the process. That's a very long answer, but I just want you to know it really comes with a lot of thought. And, you know, trying to seek input and understand the way that the processes work at the commission before we would be make recommending these big changes.
And, and I just want to clarify, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm just not sure we've been really clear. This proposal continues what is the status quo, which is all Jenny meetings will be in person. It's the only subentity that way. All it does is it allows for meetings to be held remotely absent an emergency situation. And the specific reason we're seeking this ability is to potentially have the Saturday of the two day meetings remote. So the Friday would be in person, and if there is a need to continue to Saturday, that portion would be remote. And that is, will only be necessary until that point when the Jenny calendar could be changed so that they meet in person Thursday and Friday or Monday or Tuesday during the weekday. So I, I just want to make sure we're clear. They're not being asked to move entirely remote. They're actually gonna have fewer remote meetings than the Board of Trustees, which has two of six remote. They have all six in person. We just want the ability to have the Saturday sort of spillover portion remote if needed.
Okay, thank you. My question was, it was in relation to whether or not the Jenny Commission leadership and the commission had had this conversation, and my comment stemmed from, um, my comment really stemmed from, um, just the budget, you know, I feel like we've been leading with budget in a lot of these conversations as it relates to people getting together. And I think the other piece too, which is probably more of a comment as well. I understand that the Governor's Office has a desire to get through more candidates because there are attrition issues that are pending, but in good partnership, right? We've got a partner and make sure that there are resources that are available. And I'm confident you all are having those conversations, but if there's any way that the board can support you on that, I think that's imperative. The other piece is, as you're evaluating candidates um who are going to be in these judicial positions, I would imagine that talking with someone being in their presence, I, I certainly recognize that the pandemic put us in a situation where we had to be remote, but um, you know, I, I struggle with the value of But, um, you know, I, I struggle with the value of having rich conversation with my colleagues on the board. I don't feel like I have rich conversations sitting in this setting where we are talking about very pressing issues. And so I've continuously voiced my concern around our ability to engage as a leadership body, because we don't get the opportunity to engage one-on-one. We don't get the opportunity to have the benefit of the value of, of, of sitting in a room with one another in a brain trust and really being able to forge and forge forward and, and being able to really strengthen our relationship. So we understand everyone's vantage point, even though we don't make, we may not agree with it, but we certainly can make strong decisions. And so, um, I, I appreciate that. And, um, the other piece is this, I know the last time we had a conversation around Jenny, it was about, and I may couch it the wrong way, but you know, the concern was there weren't enough public members who were on Jenny. And so we were changing the composition as it, and, and, you know, the, the reasoning was from the Governor's Office, we were changing the composition of public members and attorneys as it related to the evaluation. And I know the board from a majority standpoint moved forward and embraced that, but it feels like we keep piecemealing with Jenny from my perspective and opinion. And at some point in time, I, I would like to get to a point where we are very clear as it relates to moving forward rather than piecemealing. So thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Shelby for the, I'm sorry, Bridget, go ahead.
I was just going to respond to a couple of those comments, um, Melanie, with respect to that, the, um, I understand the piecemeal feeling and I do, I'm, I'm looking forward to presenting a more comprehensive rule revision in general. I think what some of the issue is that the, the Jenny rules are really specific sometimes. And like, these are exact, these are good examples. We might not be doing this all the time. We're not looking to go completely remote, but the fact that the rule requires in person is what we're trying to change just to give us flexibility when needed. Like the rule that you were talking about before, we've never actually had to have a, an all attorney member, um, panel of somebody looking at an, at an appellate court judge. We just made the change in case we needed that to happen, but it hasn't had to happen. But it's just, we're trying to make the rules a little bit more nimble to allow us to move forward. Uh, but I understand your points and, and, um, and again, and with respect to the in-person, um, your observations about meeting in person, I think Jenny particularly really values that. And we, I, I see the value in it too, in the, the very rich discussions they have about these judicial candidates, which is why, you know, we didn't recommend cutting their in-person meetings altogether, but just trimming it down just to have more, you know, one day in-person meetings.
Thank you, Bridget. Brandon, go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Bridget, for your presentation. I know we've talked a lot offline about Jenny issues, especially you, me and Melanie, uh, with our, uh, serving in the appointments liaison role. And, you know, some of the things that I, I know that I've commented to you on that I've received from Jenny Commissioners is, um, you know, a couple of concerns. Um, I think the first was felt like a kind of a convincing period from which to produce their work product to get their investigations completed. Um, and then in order to make those then available to the rest of the commission. So could you just talk just a little bit about the timeline that they're on and then how we've tried to, I guess, ameliorate some of those concerns or at least, you know, make it a little bit more efficient?
Um, sure. With respect to the timeline, um,
As far as like when, when, when an investigation is assigned and when they're to have it completed?
Oh, sure. Yes. So, so it is very unique. They have a ninety-day cycle. So the governor gives us a list of candidates that he is considering appointing. And then we have, the Jenny Commission has ninety days from the time we receive that list to um, go, they, they're assigned to investigative teams. They go out and interview candidates. Usually each commissioner is assigned to two candidates per cycle. Then they interview, um, there's a lead commissioner, they draft the reports and then present it to the Jenny Commission, the full commission at a meeting. They make the recommendation and then we give that to the governor and that all happens within ninety days. So they meet every other month. Um, and then at the meetings themselves is when they, you know, they present their report and this is when they have their discussion about whether to, what, what rating they're going to recommend to the governor. So it's like, well, you know, exceptionally well-qualified, well-qualified, qualified or not qualified. Um, and so does that answer your question about what, what's happening or where are there or where are we headed?
So as far as like when they need to have the reports turned in now with the new system in order for, for the review, I guess some commissioners expressed concern that that timeline felt like very compressing and, and, uh, it felt a little bit overwhelming at times.
Got it. Yes. So that, thank you. So we did ask for, we did kind of adjust the timeline so that we as staff would have an additional week to edit the reports and get them up and posted a week so that they have a whole week to review the, to review the reports um, before coming to the meeting. So that initial, um, we, we started that process for the December meeting. And it did feel, I, it did feel compressed, I, I believe largely because of the holidays fell in the middle of that particular cycle. So there was Thanksgiving in there and it, and it did feel like it was rushed. I didn't hear as much, um, concern about that on the, for the second time that we did it, the last February meeting. Um, but also we're looking at ways that we can, um, take some of the administrative burden off of the investigators perhaps too, so that they can, you know, for example, maybe staff can take on more of like sending out the forms so that the investigators, by the time they get their assignment, they can just kind of hit the ground running and start looking at what kind of feedback they've received and start interviewing people. So we're still, we definitely haven't, um, completed our review and, and we still are in the process of trying to really recognize, um, the work that these volunteers are doing, see what we can do to, to address that and, um, and, and move forward. The other thing I, I want to make sure I'm clear on is we're not really, we, we don't want, we want to make sure they have as much time as they need to consider all the candidates. We're not interested in saying you only have one day and you have to get everything completed in one day. What we're trying to do with this proposed rule and then in the future is to allow the meeting to continue. Um, in this case, their meetings are scheduled all the way through twenty, um, April of twenty twenty-four for Fridays and Saturdays. Right now they're already set. So in, with that being the case, staff is recommending that they have a full day in person on Friday. And if they need to continue their conversation, this rule would allow them to do that on Saturday, as Leah mentioned. In the future years, we're recommending that just the meetings get set on a diff, you know, Thursday, Friday during the weekdays. So they do have two days, they can take as much as they need of the second day to conduct their business. So we're not trying to trim it to one day. We just are trying to trim it to one hotel night is really what we're, that's the budget implication.
And, and no Saturday meeting.
And no Saturday.
One hotel night and no Saturday meeting.
Right.
And I would say, Brandon, as Bridget mentioned, she's going to come back with a broader set of Jenny rule proposals in, um, May. And that's probably the time to take up issues like how long they have to generate reports, because this particular item is about the ability to hold meetings remotely.
Yeah. And, and I understand that. And I guess the reason I bring it up is because, you know, I want to be mindful of, you know, what, what Michelle B talked about, which is making sure that our volunteers are, you know, that we're not driving, or we're not trying to, you know, cut costs on the back of volunteers and, you know, I've certainly received a lot of input from the various commission members that I know. And I think there, I think the commission just needs to know that the board is really taking this seriously and looking at all options. Um, and certainly I know Melanie and I have worked extensively with Bridget on this. And, you know, I've continued to, you know, uh, work with Bridget to, you know, get that full, full menu of options out there. But just, I think it's important to note that this is not the only rule that's going to come out. I know, and I just wanted to highlight that that's, you know, that Bridget's going to be bringing more in May. Um, will we have a chance to discuss any other, um, potential options before the May, um, May board meeting? I guess maybe as a board. And so I just wanted to open it up, Mr. Chair, if that's okay. See if there's any other, um, ideas perhaps that we could, uh, as a board, um, give to Bridget to pursue in the meantime, so we can be efficient with, you know, the time that we have. Certainly one comes to mind and that is, you know, do we need to expand the number of Jenny commissioners in order to, um, support the increasing workload? I mean, that might be something that we, that we look at, but definitely want to keep all, all options on the table to, uh, keep our volunteers as happy as, uh, awesome.
Thank you, Brandon. Uh, several issues that you just brought up, and I would actually like to offer my own comments after we've heard from other folks. But to that last issue, which I essentially am interpreting to mean, could we here, uh, offer additional direction to change what goes out for public comment? Um, and so I will turn that over to Bridget or Lou.
Well, yeah, I just want to clarify, the only thing that's, um, presented today to go out for public comment is a rule change regarding the ability to hold meetings and interviews remotely. I, I don't think that today we can modify this item to add more members to the Jenny Commission, which in fact I, I think might require a statutory change, although I'm not sure. Um, so I, I don't know, Brandon, some of the issues you're talking about really don't relate to a meeting being remote or not. It's, it's about other issues. So if you're wanting to tee up other issues to be considered as part of that May rulemaking process, um, then I think, you know, certainly happy to have that conversation. I just want to be clear about exactly what we're talking about, where. If you're talking specifically about options so that Jenny could continue to have their Saturday portion of their meetings in person, pending a calendar change to have the two days in person during the meet. If you're just talking specifically about those options, sure, we could tell you some that we have, uh, entertained, just to go back to, um, Melanie's question, we most certainly have been in communication with Jenny leadership. They asked us to pursue a couple of different alternatives with regard to the Saturday meetings, including having law firms host Jenny on Saturdays and the state bar renting hotel office space. Um, we did look into those, gave them feedback on those. So, so I'm not sure what, what options, um, or alternatives you're talking about here.
Yeah, it, it wouldn't be anything to modify the rules that we're seeking to send out for public comment today. It's just, I guess, having a broader discussion about any other things that, that could be suggested at this point to Bridget look into. So that way, when Bridget comes back in May, then we can have maybe a more robust conversation. So, so that's it. So, and, and I would definitely volunteer to work more closely with Bridget and Melanie if she would, uh, be a part of it, just because we've been involved in that whole, uh, this whole discussion for a while.
Yeah, I was just going to offer that. I'm happy to do that, um, when we are preparing the final package and consult with you as we're, as we're working through those additional changes. I, I think even the composition is in there and the rule changes, I think.
Okay. And I'm sorry, my last comment is, um, I've also, I've received positive feedback from commissioners with the flexibility of interviewing candidates via Zoom. Sometimes with, um, the timeline being compressed with schedules, they have really appreciated that flexibility. So that is some positive feedback I've received.
That's great.
Thank you, Brandon. Jose, please.
Hi, thanks. Thanks, Bridget. I wanted to just put, put one comment out there, which is, I didn't read in the write-up. Um, uh, following up, I, I think on, um, Brandon's last comment, as far as, um, interviewing candidates, uh, remotely and over Zoom. Um, it says that, uh, obviously that adds a convenience and, and time savings and, and all that. Uh, but I would also like to add that it really is a benefit for members of our Jenny, uh, to have those candidate interviews be, uh, done on Zoom, which then gives us the R Jenny members a full um, visual Zoom recording of the candidate and their interview, uh, which has been very, very helpful. Um, I, I, I've only been on our Jenny in the, in the Zoom, um, era. So, um, I've been very appreciative of it and I'm, I'm glad that the limitation of, uh, or the requirement that they be done in person is proposing to be removed because, um, I think that's been a real benefit. I would almost want to change it to it has to be on Zoom, but I'll, I'll leave it the way it is now. Thank you.
Thank you for putting that out. That is a really important thing that I've heard too from other members of our Jenny.
Thank you. Trustee Tony.
Thank you. I, um, I'm fine with, um, proposals to streamline, um, you know, processes and procedures, maximize efficiency. Um, you know, that, that, that make things run better, make decision-making processes run better. Um, what I'm concerned about is that this is being motivated by the requests from the governor to increase the number of candidates that are being, um, evaluated each ninety days. Um, the conversation that I would hope would happen is similar to what trustee, uh, trustee Shelby, um, mentioned, which is, you know, the Governor's Office says, we really want the state bar to, um, increase the number of candidates. You know, we've got a backlog. This is really important. You know, this is going to, um, you know, really help the judicial system work better. Okay? And the conversation should be, um, great. This is how much it's going to cost. This is the budget we need in order to do that. Doing more costs more. The state bar keeps being put in the position of unfunded mandates. Any organization that continues to accept unfunded mandates will never get the resources it needs. It is very simple. I bet everybody here has heard this. If you always work for free, you will never get paid. Okay? Very, very simple concept. And this is an example. How important is this to the governor? To get more judges appointed? I don't know. I bet. I bet he thinks it's pretty important. Okay? Well, then I would say great. In order for us to be able to do this in a thorough way, in a way that adequately vets each candidate and maximizes the state bar's ability, the Jenny Commission's ability to provide you with the most accurate um, uh, recommendations and evaluations. We need the resources. We can do more, but we need the resources to do more. So I'm just saying, um, a, a, and remember, I'm appointed by the governor. Okay? So it's not like, you know, you know, you, you know, I, you know, and, and I'm just saying this publicly. I really want to encourage, and what would, what would help me vote yes on this instead of no would be an assurance from staff that yes, we're going to do that. We're going to come up with a budget and we're going to request it. And, and we're going to ask some of our trustees who are appointed by the governor to weigh in, because I will weigh in in the governor's office. Um, but I want to do it as part of a team. I don't want to do it as Lone Ranger. So I'm just saying that, uh, this is my strong view. And I just want to make sure everybody else knew what I was thinking.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I, I just jump in and say, we have twice, um, submitted formal proposals for funding for the Jenny Commission to the Governor's Office and happy to pull together, um, the gubernatorial appointees with the funding proposals and, um, schedule a, a meeting with the staff, uh, that we've been working with in that office on the budget issue and happy to have you all at work to advocate for funding. I, I do think, Mark, um, it would be a mistake to characterize, um, all of the changes that we've been talking about as being driven by budget. I for one chafe at the idea that the best way to run anything is to have people sit in a room or on Zoom together and read reports out loud to one another. Um, the fact, you know, in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, that we haven't figured out how to have a secure site to post reports so that people could read them in advance is unfortunate, but we have resolved that. So I think whether you have five candidates or fifty, that is a better way of doing business. So, um, you know, again, we're complaining a lot of issues here because the present item is about being able to have Saturday, the Saturday portion of two-day meetings remotely. Uh, but just to speak to some of the other efficiency improvements, it's not all about money. It's about the best use of time for, for people and, and a way to, you know, conduct business. The board gets thousands of pages of material, as you know. Can you imagine if we were sitting, reading that out loud to one another? Um, and that you didn't have any opportunity to review any. to one another and that you didn't have any opportunity to review any of it in advance? You know, given how thoroughly you review material in particular, I doubt that you would appreciate that model. So I just want to clarify that, but definitely we'll take you up on your offer.
Well, and just a reminder, we did adopt, the board did adopt as a legislative priority, one of the, one of the items is to seek additional funding from Jenny and general fund money from Jenny. So we definitely will be pursuing that. And the just to address your other comment, you know, it's just we, this whole exercise in looking at the operations was really driven by the initial request, but certainly the the recommendations before you today just have to do with, you know, how making sure that we can operate as efficiently as we can, just for the sake of doing that. It's not really to, these particularly requests especially are just because we think this is the right thing to do, regardless of how many, how many candidates we're we're looking at per cycle. And I think we really are, now that we've undertaken that really important review, now we're in a much better position to tell the governor, okay, we we've looked at our procedures, we know that we're operating efficiently and we're not able to take on more until we have additional funding and we're confident in our own procedures and saying that now.
Thank you all. Jose, I don't know if your hand is still up or if it went up a second time, but Arnie, we'll let Arnie go and then you can let me know.
Just real quick, I I want to echo some of the comments of my fellow finance committee member, Mr. Tony, in the sense that the budget implications of the Jenny Commission are real as it relates to to the board. And it is clear that we do need a better sort of understanding of of their budget and and what that budget is and how and and what are the, so the the key sort of cost centers relative to that. And I just, I think all I'm just sort of suggesting is that I'd like to be a part of some of those discussions to better understand what that budget sort of looks like, as well as I I I heard Ms. Wilson indicate that there have been proposals that we presented to the governor's office relative to this. You know, I and and I think a lot of that is hinged in the governor's office picking up some of the tab here. I don't know if that's the sole way to get this funded or not, but we just would like to be a part of any discussions that 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 take place relative to this and the and the Jenny budget.
Thank you, Arnie. For for such a very discreet pair of proposed rule changes, the discussion here, I think, illustrates again, how much work the state bar does that is critical to the the legal system, the justice system in California and and how so many of the pieces of the work that individual trustees do and bring to your role here on the board and our interactions with the staff and interactions with all kinds of people, including Jenny commissioners. It's I'm not surprised to hear several of you reference conversations you've had with Jenny commissioners, as have I. And again, this is just one of those things where I'm hopeful and confident that at the same time, that the collective wisdom of many people caring about an important issue will bring about the right result. In the meantime, let's just remember that this is a discreet action that the staff is asking us to take, which is to release for public comment for 45 days these two proposed rule changes, understanding also that the conversation doesn't end there. Finally, what I will offer is an anticipation of an approval on this, that because I know Jenny commissioners are not and have not been shy in sharing their thoughts and their feelings with several of us on the board and and perhaps even staff, that that they also use the public comment area to to share with the board in a in a written form, their their thoughts, their concerns, their their suggestions. Anything else from staff or from the board? Seeing.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the item.
Okay, thank you. Can we see a resolution, please?
And I'll second.
Thank you. Can we have a roll?
Bratton?
Yes.
One Ventura, not present. Chen, not present. Sisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Yes.
No?
Trustee Noel, I saw his name, but not the video.
Okay, I don't think I'm seeing trustee Noel in the panelist or apologies. I also do not see him in the attendee. Okay, trustee Noel, not present. Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We'll move on to item 702, which is an update regarding the legislative priorities of the state bar for the 2023 legislative session. We are having a presentation by, I believe, Chief of Programs Donna Hershkowitz, and back to Ms. Grammy.
So lucky to have me. I I'm gonna be kicking it off and I think Donna's coming on now. So on on this item, for the benefit of Ms. Good, because I know you weren't here at the January meeting, we had a, the the state bar back in 2018 adopted a legislative principles and guidelines, basically, for the bar. Once the suction split off and the and the trade association function of the bars split off so that it helps to signal both internally and externally, you know, what types of issues that the 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 state bar will be advocating for in the legislative legislative branch and the executive branch. And so the way it works is every year, staff meets with the legislative liaisons for the Board of Trustees. We adopt or we come up with a list of potential priorities to pursue for the year and we present them to the board for the board approval. So we did that back in the January meeting. We approved, the board approved a number of priorities having to do with everything from, you know, small minor changes regarding the discipline system to funding issues, as we kind of alluded to at the last discussion. And we also previewed that we might be coming back in March with some additional priorities to propose. Some of those had to do with recommendations made by the Committee of Our Examiners and also the Ad-Hoc Commission on Oversight and Accountability. We haven't received any recommendations from those groups yet, so we're not recommending any priorities there. And the other, the other issue that we said we would come back on has to do with potential amendments to Business and Professions, because section 6086.1. That is the provision that allows the bar to waive otherwise confidential information relating to pending investigations of licensees in in the interest of the public. And it's obvious, it's been top of mind for many people lately, particularly with respect to the release of the reports last week. It's also, as Leah mentioned, at issue in the LA Times litigation and the Supreme Court just issued a briefing schedule in that matter. So we expect some more movement on that. But we did come up as staff, George Cardona particularly helped us to draft some potential amendments to the statute that would, you know, expand in some circumstances what we might be able to disclose and also just kind of codify the procedures that the bar undertakes in making the decision about whether or not to, you know, whether to waive this confidentiality. And we've had discussions with legislative staff and also just some informal discussions with some stakeholders on on that draft language. And what has become clear in the midst of these discussions is that there really is a pretty significant divide among stakeholders and between those that think we need to disclose more and those who think we really need to limit the amount of disclosure and implement more due process standards with respect to which licensees whose names might be disclosed in this process. And in light of this divide, as well as the Supreme Court's this litigation happening right now, staff is not recommending that we pursue this at this point as a legislative priority. What we what we plan to do is to, we still have another group that we're planning on meeting with next week to get some more feedback, some kind of informal feedback on this preliminary language, compile that feedback that we've heard and provide information back to the legislature about what we've heard and are, you know, recommend, you know, some potential amendments and then provide technical assistance as needed as the legislative process moves forward. But, you know, at this moment, we don't feel like it makes sense to adopt, making these amendments as a legislative priority. So that's what we just wanted to give you an update. We don't really have anything for you to vote on, but that's where we are with respect to the things that we said we would come back with. And I'm I'm happy to answer questions about that. And then I know Donna wanted to give you an update also on the LAO recommendations about the budget. So I thought I would pause it before turning it to Donna if anyone has questions.
Thank you, Bridget. Any questions for Bridget on what she just presented? Don't see any. Thank you for the for the information. Makes sense.
Sure.
Donna, welcome. Hello.
Good afternoon. So also at the January board meeting, there was a brief discussion about the recommendation that the Legislative Analyst Office included in their evaluation of the state bar's case processing standards. Specifically, the recommendation that the state bar become incorporated into the state budget process. And so we just wanted to update you briefly on the exploration that's been going on on this issue. And since the board meeting, staffs have spoken with a few agencies that, like us, do not receive state general fund monies, but that are currently part of the the legislative budget process to get some insight from them. Among the things that we that we asked them, that we were looking into, what fees these agencies assess and the extent to which there are parallels between their fee structures and the state bar's fee structure, such that their insight and experiences would be relevant to us. And we were exploring the extent to which negotiated bargain for compensation increases are funded. In other words, do they receive fee increases to support those negotiated changes? We were exploring the role of the budget committees versus the policy committees and how they work together or not. And the extent to which being involved in the in the state budget process would move fee discussions from the policy arena to the budget arena. And we were also looking at at the impact on the ability to be nimble and how agencies are able to respond to emerging issues and needs that require redeployment of staff, the creating of a new officer or division, and the launch of a pilot project that requires the addition of staff. And so during this exploration with with these with these other entities, we learned that for some, the fees that are set in statute are fairly limited. There's a $100 fee to file an application, a fee of a certain amount to submit fingerprint records. But that the agency, in fact, may be largely funded by assessments, the amount of which is not statutory and is set, in fact, by the agency prorata across all of their licensees. And and it's set at a level that is necessary to meet their program's expenditures, to fund staff, to keep their lights on, to conduct the regulation that they engage in. And that's all outside of the legislative process. This, for us, this felt not necessarily comparable to how the state bar is funded. And and what we've got set in statute, sort of the entirety really of our licensing fee that largely sets our budget. We have sort of minimal fees outside of that process, but most of our fees in the legislative process, as opposed to the reverse for for some of these entities. One of the other things that we noted also was that that we wanted to, that we wanted to note to you also is that the two houses of the legislature, as well as the governor's office, are not necessarily in alignment on whether this this is a recommendation from the LAO that they would want to pursue. And, you know, one of the things that we've concluded, I mean, is that there's no question that the state bar currently has an ability to be nimble in a way that we believe would be seriously impacted in this new environment. So in order to determine the extent to which we want to get behind this proposal and and advocate for it, there just needs to be a solid evaluation of all of the pros and cons. So all this is to say that we are continuing to do our research and our exploration and we'll be presenting all of this information to the board's legislative liaisons to get further direction. And we just wanted to keep you updated and let you know that what we've been doing up to this point on this.
Thank you for the update, Donna. Any questions? Observations, comments? It's just so well.
No, I appreciate the 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 presentation and and getting updated. I'm going to bring something else into the into the mix here as just an observation and potentially a suggestion for something for us to take to take a look at through either the legislative liaison work we're doing or or sort of another sort of venue or avenue. And here's, one of the things that's going on at the state level right now has to do with the need for the state to to write a digital equity plan. And this is a plan that would essentially help us access a great deal of federal sort of broadband money. And the reason why I bring it up is I I wonder if it is something that the team at the state bar should just sort of take a look at as to whether or not it is a a process that we should get involved in or at least make some, provide some commentary into. In particular, because a number of the the focus areas of this digital equity plan involve groups that I would think maybe are are some of the groups that we think about when we when we start to talk about access to justice. Folks that are, folks that are of, you know, folks that are in marginalized communities, folks that are come from 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 various racial groups, folks that are may have disabilities, et cetera. And so I wonder if I I just sort of, I share that just to say, I think it might be worth a at least some sort of interactions with folks over at the Department of Technology to figure out whether or not there is either a role or at least some commentary that the state bar would like to like to provide relative to this issue. And it's essentially trying to close the digital divide and issues of digital equity as it relates to access to justice.
Thank you so much for that suggestion. And we did, in fact, flag the the digital digital equity plan legislation as one for us to monitor. And so we'll go back and take another look at it with with that eye to to see what role we can be playing in providing input along the lines you're talking about. So we'll, we we had identified it as something that that might be of interest, but now we've got sort of a different, a different hook into what that interest might be. So thank you.
And I have to say, Donna, after the article you shared, I think it was this morning about ChatGPT 4.0 now passing the bar exam and all of the products that are the AI tools that are coming out there for lawyers to expand access and perhaps self-represented litigants to increase their access. This is a whole new reason potentially for folks to have digital access, to be able to access legal services. So very much in our lane, Arnie. So thank you. We'll do that. You're muted.
The only thing I would just sort of offer is that there are, there's some working groups that have now formed that are part of this this planning process. And and I'm happy to to see if I can put you in touch with some folks over at the Department of Technology that are sort of spearheading this process at this particular point in time. So but I appreciate the sort of the observations and the fact that the the team is already sort of looking at this.
Thank you. Yes, please do connect us with the Department of Technology.
Thank you, Arnie. Mark, Tony, please.
I really appreciate that Donna's brought this issue up. The the and has done the research with other estate agencies around, you know, what the experience is being part of the budgetary process. You know, the state agency that I know the best is the California Public Utilities Commission. And they're very similar in that their revenue stream is regulatory fees. They get no general fund money. And yet their budget must be approved annually by the state legislature. And they go through all the processes. And I guess my observation and my experience with this is that it is a very positive experience because the budget committees really are looking at the question of how much does it take for the agency to do what it needs to do? And, you know, sometimes Tern, which, you know, is known for being critical of the And, you know, sometimes turn, which, uh, you know, is known for being critical of the CPUC will show up at the subcommittee, budget subcommittees and say, we think the agency needs more resources. Okay? And, you know, people are, are surprised when they see us there, say, arguing on behalf of the regulatory agency. And, um, here's one of the advantages when, um, your budget goes through, is that whenever there is a bill that's in front of the policy committees, we want the CPUC to do X, Y, and Z. We want them to open up a proceeding on this. We want them to do whatever, okay? Um, there is a fiscal note attached. How many FTEs are necessary? What are their job titles? For what period of time? And so the policy committees actually see the dollars and cents associated. And the budget committees take that into account. That does not happen now. Okay? That, what happens now is unfunded mandates because we're not connected to the budgetary process. I, from seeing the experience, from my own experience, even with an agency that for a long period of time was, was very unpopular, okay? The California Public Utilities Committee, uh, Commission, uh, has gone through periods of being very unpopular, okay? Um, that the process yielded them adequate resources to do the job. I strongly, I mean, I, look, it's not the board's decision. This is gonna be the legislature, legislature's decision whether to take the LAO. Um, it's, you know, we're not as a board, we don't have the authority to make this happen. But I will tell you, I have been in my own conversations, letting people know that Mark Tony, as an individual trustee, very strongly supports this proposal. Um, when I've met with committee staff from the Assembly and Senate, I told them that that's what Mark Tony thinks. I'm speaking for myself, not for the board. And I'm gonna keep pushing this among the trustees to, to really consider being supportive of this. This is an opportunity. And my final point is, um, there's little, um, advantage to being nimble if you're poor. If you don't have the resources to meet your core mission. And I do believe that our budget is inadequate to meet our core mission right now, that, um, uh, being nimble is no substitute for being adequately resourced.
Uh, Mr. Tony, if I may just assure you this one point, and which is, please know that among the agencies that we spoke with was the CPUC.
I, 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 I would, um, expect no less, Donna. So yes, thank you for confirming that.
Thank you, Mark Tony, for singing the song of my childhood. Um, nobody got that from me, that's okay. Uh, any other comments on the legislative agenda? I mean, certainly plenty of not only food for thought, but strings to follow up, um, for those of us who are legislative liaisons. And, and certainly Mr. Tony's not shy about sharing, uh, his recommendations. And I would encourage all of you to do likewise, either in this setting or, uh, offline with any of the legislative liaisons. Uh, that is Mr. Soell, myself, and I'm forgetting somebody.
Trustee Shelby.
Trustee Shelby, thank you. Sorry, how could I? Um, all right. Thank you, everyone, for the good conversation. That takes us to the end of our open session agenda, if I am not mistaken. And I will announce our closed session items, which are being held under the authority of Business and Professions Code, Section six zero two six point seven subsection C three, Government Code, Section one eleven twenty-six subsection A, and, excuse me, A one, and subsection C. Government Code, Section one eleven twenty-six subsection E two B I, and Government Code, Section one eleven two six point two. That is, uh, quite a few items in our closed session. Uh, trustees, you should have received or will be receiving very shortly a separate link to a closed session, um, meeting at the conclusion of that session, which I anticipate to be sometime before five o'clock this evening or afternoon. Um, we will come back out to let the public know whether there is anything public to report. Thank you all for your participation in, um, a very important open session meeting today. Look forward to seeing you in a closed session. Thanks. Dexter.
I, I did.
Great.
Or else, oh, here she is.
We're not recording.
Thank you, everyone. I will get that right one day, I promise. It is, uh, just a few minutes before six o'clock on Thursday the sixteenth. This is the State Bar Board of Trustees reconvening after, uh, closed session. Um, I believe we have, did we have more than one resolution in closed session to report out? And in general counsel, no, no resolutions that were reportable, no resolutions. Um, so there is, uh, nothing to report. And I want to thank all the members of the Board of Trustees, Ms. Wilson and, and, and your staff for a, a good, long day of, of, um, important and hard work. Because we are finished this evening, there is no need to convene tomorrow morning. I'm sure that we will, uh, let the public know in an appropriate way. Thank you all again for your hard work and we will, uh, see you next time. We'll, actually, we'll see you at the special meeting on the twenty-fourth. Take care, everyone. Have a good weekend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.